I'm not going to use the gavel tonight because it's the first meeting in September. Just wanted to ask people to do project well tonight so that the folks in the audience can hear us. We are working on some improved audio. Thank you Community Relations Committee for that, but until that's in place, we want to make sure that we project not only for the camera but for those in the audience. So I might interrupt you and ask you to speak up if your volume goes down. Rule call. We know Rob's not here.
And we know Niles will not be here and Wally will not be here.
And Dakota must be.
Oh, I haven't heard of Dakota, so we'll see.
Okay. And I'll wait until a little bit later, okay. So approval of the minutes. We had the minutes from August 2nd circulated after review. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion or amendments needed? Good, all those in favor? Great. Any opposed, any abstentions? Tony and Amanda and probably Lucas. Okay. Adjustments to the agenda. We do have one adjustment to the agenda regarding personnel and that's in your folder and Rick will address that when we get to that section of the agenda. We didn't have anyone sign up for addressing the board just for a reminder. We do ask just for a quick sign up so we have some idea of who's going to be speaking and also what topics are going to be covered for public comment, but we certainly welcome anyone who didn't have an opportunity to sign up to step forward if you'd like to address the board tonight. Great, thank you. I do want to take a moment to welcome Lucas Flanagan to the board as one of our student representatives and Lucas, do you want to share a little bit about yourself?
Well, I'm a junior at Hampden right now. I'm excited to be here, that's about it.
Wait, are you a Hampden resident?
Yes, Anne.
Okay. Well, welcome to the board and feel free to ask any of us questions along the way. We're happy to help in any way we can, but thanks for joining us. Also want to send out my thanks to the administration and to the faculty and staff for a great start to the school year. I know that the children are coming home, at least mine are, still loving schools and that's a plus and very excited about the school year. So thank you to all the work. I know how hard it has been to get everything in place for a start, successful start to the school year. I just wanted to express the board's thanks and appreciation. And with that, I'll hand it over to Rick.
Okay, under personnel, I do have one resignation to report this evening. A person has been with us for 17 years. I regretfully want to inform publicly that Anne Legasse has submitted her resignation. Anne is our district accountant. She's been with SAD 22/RSU 22 for 17 years. She has accepted the dean of finance and administration at Kennebec Valley Community College, which is a great opportunity for her and she'll be, her last day with us is October 13th. We've advertised the position and we'll be looking, hopefully in a couple of weeks, Riege and I getting together to look at that and to start moving forward. I believe Heath has volunteered to be on that committee. If any of you would like to join us, please send me an email. We'll be screening applications probably in a couple of weeks to start in the interview of the latter part of September and hopefully have a period of time where we can have someone selected who'll serve some transition time with Anne before she departs on October 13th. That's a pretty aggressive schedule, but we'll see how that works out. So again, I do want to publicly commend Anne. She's done a phenomenal job in this district. As you know, as a board, every year we discuss our audit report. That audit report to a very large degree is aligned perfectly with Anne Legasse and her high level of expertise and commitment to our district. So a sincere thank you and best wishes for her career movement.
And not only, the board certainly ditto's what you just said about her, but I just want to say that Anne has been such a joy and she works with such integrity every day and we certainly value all of the many hours and days that she has dedicated and years she's dedicated to this district and we'll miss her greatly and know that she's setting us up well for that transition and we greatly appreciate the extended leave that, our notice that she's given us.
You might be interested, maybe of interest to you, it's an interest of me, not interest, but it reminds me. Anne was here when I came to the district in 1992 and Anne and I were alone the first year because my assistant superintendent that year had a massive heart attack after four weeks on the job and he never returned. So Anne and I were alone for the first year. Anne left the district to go out to RSU 34 Alltown for 10 years then returned to us. So she actually has been in an accountant position for almost 30 years between our district and RSU 34. So I really give her accolades for working with me the first day on the job, July 1, 1992. Under nominations, before that, I do want to publicly announce some transfers for the benefit of the audience. Andrea Bosino has been transferred from McGraw to the Wagner Middle School. Megan Schall from grade four teacher to literacy specialist at the Weatherby School and Robin Gonyer from the specialized teacher at McGraw to grade four teacher at Weatherby. If you reference your agenda notes, we do have two nominations this evening. The first one is grade one teacher McGraw Elementary Schools, Kayla Worcester. Kayla's been in our district as an educational technician. Her salary for the collective bargaining contract is $33,015. I ask for your endorsement of Kayla Worcester, grade one teacher at McGraw.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, thank you Kayla. Congratulations and welcome. And where's Stephanie? There she is. Stephanie, I've been practicing this for a week, but I want to make sure. Your last name is Stephanie?
Steierman.
Steierman. Steierman. Thank you Stephanie. My nomination is Stephanie Steierman, technology integration specialist at McGraw and Weatherby. You can see she has extensive postgraduate work, two master's degrees, BA as well in Columbia University in New York, extensive experience throughout the country and comes with a vast amount of experience. Stephanie's salary for the collective bargaining contract, $59,328. I ask you for the endorsement of Stephanie Steierman as technology integration teacher at Weatherby and McGraw.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Congratulations. Stephanie, congratulations. I have three nominations in the extracurricular curricular arena. Cameron Cardelo, athletic director at the Samuel Wagner Middle School. Derek Smith, boys soccer at the Samuel Wagner Middle School. And in your adjustment to the agenda, Frank Raff, boys soccer coach at Reesburg Middle School. Typically, we take these as a group, so per your endorsement of that concept, I ask for your endorsement of those three individuals.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, thank you. All right, moving to the superintendent schools, reading the essential behavior and outcome proclamation this evening. Dr. Libatore. Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our community share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves, our schools, our community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our community to participate in our schools. We'll have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members. Thank you Tommy. Next item, I'd like to introduce Ben Johnson, Mike Ditzel, faculty members here at Hampden Academy. These two gentlemen enjoy participating in advanced placement session and they're going to share this evening what they learned from that and bring back their information and learning experience. So gentlemen.
I made a slideshow because I like doing slide shows. Can I?
Absolutely. Help yourself.
You left me out.
Michelle?
You left me out.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Michelle, thank you.
I'm here too.
Michelle attended the meeting and asked if she could join us and I was focusing on these two gentlemen.
That's okay.
Michelle actually participated.
Footlights on us?
Footlights on you guys. Good, I'll step right back.
Thank you.
No problem.
And Michelle, as we all know, is also a faculty member here at Hampden Academy.
Right.
Excuse me.
Nate?
Chrome.
IT support?
Sorry.
Don't we have an integration?
The chat about creative cameraman slash IT man.
It's not Weatherby, McGraw. That's what you do. Did she leave on? She left?
I don't know. I don't want to just keep having to handle things. Because I have one team.
Put the slideshow. We're a little small.
This is TV.
Sorry.
I'm going to control it. I'm going to go over there. Let's see. Anne, I can control it?
It's a very nice line.
Thank you. I spent like seconds on this.
Yeah.
But I came back to it like seven different times and added the acorn at the end. So I'd like to thank you guys for listening to this and for hearing about the experience that we had. My name is Ben Johnson and I am the Latin teacher here at Hampden Academy and I participated in the AP Latin reading last summer, last June. I'm here with.
Mike Ditzel, I do the AP stats and I've done the AP reading for the last three years, which contains a city. Anne.
Michelle Merkler, I teach social studies here. I am the AP US history teacher and I have done the scoring for the past two years. AP US history is a little bit different and so I have done the scoring remotely from home.
And we will talk about that. And the, yes, and so in order to get started, we want to maybe talk about a little bit about what some of the background is. So if you don't know, advanced placement is a thing that's run by the college board in order to, and it's been around for a long time, in order to allow students to participate in college level curriculum in the high school and possibly get college credit based off of how well they do on an end of the course test. And it is something that's important for us at the high school level because the curricula is set and predefined by college professors and it's supposed to represent a college-type course. So for some courses, it could be like a freshman-level course in college. For others, like for language, not to toot my own horn, it's usually a fifth semester or even like a junior year course based off of the content that we do and then compare it to what is often done in college. So this rigor is something that's really important for us to offer to our students because of the high expectations. It's also important because students, if they do well, can, depending on where they go to college, can get college credit for it. So some students can go in with their AP credit possibly at a sophomore level and that can save a lot of money in the long run. The test itself only costs something like $90, $95 to take. So $95 compared with, I don't know, $60,000 a year, it is cost-effective. And it's also important for students because students that are able to take an AP class and then go through the entire year of this very rigorous college-level curriculum and then take the test and study and prepare for this test have shown on, in studies, to do better and to be more ready for the demands in post-secondary school, so college or other places where they might actually have to take like a licensure test, which actually might be very, a lot more challenging than a lot of the college finals. So these students do better than students that just go through an AP class and don't take the test. So there's something about having that end of the course test they're pushing for that at the end of that course, you review massive amounts of material. You know, in college, it can be very hard to study for a final when you have all of the stuff and that's one of the benefits of AP. We prepare students for that. So it's also, as someone who teaches seniors in AP, it's also something that's important for me to make sure that they're continuing to work towards the end of the year and that they choose to not have senioritis, yes, and because that does happen a lot. And so with a test in May, it gives them something to push for and I can continue to push them and to teach them throughout their time here. So at Hampden Academy, we have a lot of different offerings. So Mr. Lyons and Mr. Ditzel and I were reminiscing way back to when Mr. Lyons first started and he was thinking that maybe when he started, there was only one AP course offered here.
One or two then, yeah.
Yeah, and we checked with Dick Ballantyne and he was pretty sure that it was AP physics. So, because it wasn't AP biology for him. And so going from one AP course up to, we count there are about 12 different content areas that we've offered tests in last year. So we had 125 students, different students took at least one AP test here last year. This is over two weeks. The tests are three hours long. They're very strenuous and time-consuming and exhausting. There were a total of over 200 AP exams, so I guess the average student took close to two AP exams over those two weeks. And there are other options for students who maybe would like to take an AP exam if we do not offer the course. There's a program through the state of Maine called AP for All that is trying to reach out to communities that don't have certain AP courses or don't have the student bodies to support a teacher and you can take these online, VHS, which is our online course offering, has AP courses there too. And in my department, which is a foreign language, if a student just happens to be fluent in German, which has happened before multiple times, they can sign up for the AP German exam without having taken the class and take it. And they, the students who have done that have gotten fives because being a native speaker is actually something that's highly valued and prepares you for that AP class. And they're also, for the college board, they're trying to make sure that their curriculum and their AP syllabi are pushing forward into the 21st century and so they, when they look at how they change the curriculum, because they do that every so often, they try to incorporate a lot of 21st century teaching ideas, a lot of things that maybe don't reflect the past and reflect maybe the future of education. I know my own physics teacher at Hampden Academy has gone to an AP computer science principles training over the summer too, where they're not talking about actually computer science programming, but more just the general ideas around that. So logic and reason, things that might prepare students for computer science program in college. Okay.
So, so actually AP reading, Lucas is here in the AP stats this year. So you're hearing about all this rigorous work through the year and the big AP exam at the end here. So students go through the year and we, you know, through, and the test is what, early, mid-May, second or third week of May, and all the tests, AP tests are done over a two-week period. And then in June, they actually do the, we do the scoring. Of course, the multiple choice is done using computers, the actual essays or short responses are done humans. And some of them are done on-site, like in Kansas City, I think Tampa, Kentucky, and some remotely at home.
Right.
And so it's like four or five sites and that happens in June and then the scores come back and get released to the students, to the schools and the parents in July. So basically in a two-month period, the students take it, we score it, and then they get the scores. And if they get a three, four, or five, most colleges or universities give them some kind of credit, either in that major or as an elective credit. So three years ago, I kind of started the, I guess, trend here to be an AP reader. It's my third year, second year, and first year. And you have to go through an application process. Just because you're an AP teacher does not mean you're just, you're automatically accepted to be an AP reader. So there's the application process. You send your resume, your syllabus, and if you get accepted, you get put in a pool. Well, that pool of applicants is what they can draw from. So for some people, for some teachers, you might have to wait three or four years. Just because you got accepted does not mean you actually be going to the reading that year. So like AP Calc, I know Mr. Spring teaches AP Calc, if you put his name in, he might have to wait four or five years. That's a very popular subject to read for. Where other ones like AP Stats, maybe you have to wait a year or two. Luckily, I got in the first year, but you have to have a minimum of three years of teaching. So a rookie AP teacher cannot be an AP reader. They want at least three years. And I put mine in, I think after nine years, I waited to the ninth year to do it. So if he goes in applicant pool and then you get selected from that pool, then you get an invitation and ours kind of falls like just two-week sessions. Ours is like the second, no, actually the last week of school, the first week is summer, depending on snow days. And it's basically a seven-day process. And so you're there in Kansas City, where I was in Kansas City for seven days, and that first day that you're there, you spend actually majority of the day learning how to score one question. So for instance, AP Stats, there's six questions. So that first day, it's not like you're just given five minutes and look at the question and go score it. You actually get trained for six hours roughly. So first, you look at the model solution, they give you some practice, they show you some practice problems, and then you actually practice yourself. And that takes like four to five hours. And then you go to your reading room, which I'll describe that in a second. In that reading room, you're actually with a partner and you actually score the first 20 with a partner to make sure that you are consistent with the scoring to the rubric. And basically, the room is kind of set up like you guys are set up right now. So there's, I think there's 16, like eight here and eight there. So you have 16 readers and about half of them for stats is college professors and the other half are high school teachers. And they try to match you up with a college professor if they can. They also try to match up with acorns, the newbies, with an experienced one. And so what happens is you two, they're basically be a partner for the week, the next two will be a next partner and the next two will be the partner. And so what happens is you kind of score the first 20 together, make sure you scored on a scale, well, mine is a scale of one through four. And depending on the subject, might be different scales. And so you kind of go through and you, according to the rubric, you look at the rubric, you follow through after your six hours of training and you score it one through four. You have a couple of table leaders up here. These are like the gurus who've been around for many, many years, maybe they write the books, they actually write the questions. So if you and your partner are, you're working through it, can't really decide, you can come up here and ask kind of the experienced table leader. And so basically, it's for seven days for what, I think it's 60-plus hours?
Yeah.
So it's like eight to five each day for seven days, you're reading and scoring questions. And I think this last year, I got like 1,000, 1,200 questions in, depending on what kind of length of the question is. And so what happens as you're reading through the week, you try to remain consistent with the rubric and you have your professional discussions with people around you. Also, the table leaders will actually back-read. So as you're reading, they will back-read your scores and see if they actually agree with your score or disagree. And if either they agree or disagree, they might come back and have a conversation with you. So that kind of professional development, that conversation from eight to five, not only you're reading, but you're actually talking with, I had my first, my second partner was from Hawaii. So I was kind of the furthest east, furthest west from the United States, had a nice conversation through the entire week there. So basically during that seven days, you're actually having, you know, professional development throughout, talking with partners and college professors, different parts of the United States, and your table leaders there. Sometimes about mid-week, you get trained on the second question. So you kind of go through the same process again, spend about half of the day and go through that training and then read that second question for the rest of the week. So it's seven intense days. Anyone been to Disney World? I mean, Disney World, you know, going through the gates, it's really well timed, well programmed. The same thing with the AP reading. Everything, everything, they have helpers, workers, the readers, the table question leaders, everything, so it's a well-oiled machine. And that's kind of the onsite kind of reading. I know Michelle's done the kind of the remote.
Let me, so just my experience was similar to Mr. Ditzel's, other than the fact that AP Latin is a very small, very tiny community. There's maybe two or three spots open every year. There are only 30 of us, like 20 of them are college professors. I was doing the essay.
And there's like 800 stats.
There's 800 stats, yeah. So.
So big convention center.
Right.
800, so all you split up with maybe a little curtains between the room, like the room, like this would be a room that's separated by curtains.
So I was doing the essay, they had us in rooms, smaller rooms. And we had, in my, in my room, there were eight of us and of those, two of them were chief, former chief readers, so former people that used to be in charge of the entire reading, the entire grading of the AP Latin exam. And also, the, one of the chairs of the test development committee was in my room. So of us, so I was one of the newbies, one of the acorns, and of everyone else, half of them were super powerful people whose names I've read on all of the test books that I've gotten. And now I was able to get to know them pretty well and all the discussions that we had throughout the week and grading 800 essays over the span of seven, seven days, my eyes literally hurt at the end of each day.
Yeah. So Michelle says you can talk about the online, well, remote scoring.
Remote scoring. Are they on, I think they call it online. There's onsite, which they did, and online. There are six, only six different AP tests for which there are online scorers. World, world history, AP US history, I always forget one of them. Music theory, that's one I forget. And then German, Spanish, and French language tests. There are some oral components that need to be listened to online. US history, the reasoning for the online scoring for US history, this is, they've only done it two years, is because it's such a popular test. There were 509,000 students who took the AP US history test last year. There are six different constructed responses that each student needs to finish. So there are four short answer questions, which are do A, do B, do C. They do not have to develop a thesis, they do not have to make pretty prose, they just kind of get it done. Then there's a long essay and then there's a document-based question. The online scoring for AP US history is only the short answer questions, so when I said there were 509,000, each one of those kids answered four questions. That's over 2 million responses that needed to be scored. And so what happens is they spend, you may wonder, well, why the heck does it take between the second week in May when the kids take the test in June to score them? Is they scan every single one of those 2 million short answer questions on, digitally. And so what I, what I did, the selection process is exactly the same. So I was in a pool, selected, everything is virtual. So it's interesting listening to these guys talk about table leaders. I had one and I could contact him via chat, there was a chat button, and I could chat with Leroy, which is what his name was. So we talked back and forth. One of the other differences is that I needed to pass a calibration test every single time I logged in, for every single shift that I had for reading. I had to read a set of the, the one short answer question that I spent six hours learning how to score. I really know a lot about the home front of World War II now, so if anyone needs to know, come see me. The, so I had to pass a calibration test and if I didn't, the computer system wouldn't let me in to score more and I would have to call the table leader, have a discussion, try it again. Right? So that's every single time. I scored 1,800 responses over the seven days. And so the difference is I just logged in from my computer here in Maine and did the same exact thing, but had a remote experience as opposed to the in-person.
So one of the important things about this though is not just the experience, but what we can bring back to the schools and our students and for ourselves in our classrooms. So, so okay, so we'll start off with the teachers.
Right.
I would say this is the best professional development that I've had. It's very content-specific. It's around some of the smartest people in teaching that I've been in, especially in my content area. These are the people that create the curricula, that create the tests, that my students are working towards for four years. You receive the really good training where you get, you have to pass these, or you have to have these calibrations, either online where you have to pass them or the discussions that you have when you're on-site of talking about why certain essays, which don't quite fit into the rubrics, or why certain responses that don't quite fit into the rubrics are one grade over the other. And that back and forth discussion is really valuable when it comes time for me to bring this back to my classroom because when my students do something that doesn't quite fit into the rubric or that, you know, well, the course description says that this is what it should be, but I have no idea, I can help guide my students into the right way of answering a question or at least give them consistent feedback. The interactions with the different people there, the development committee, the chief readers and the professionals that work for the college board and ETS, which is the company that makes the tests, are really important because that gives you an idea about how these tests are made. Unfortunately, we're kind of governed by standardized tests in education and being able to master these tests, being able to get our students to actually show what they know on these tools so that they can perform at the level that we know they're at, but does the test reflect their learning?
Right, and there's just, at the end.
You receive the, the really good training where you get, you have to pass these, or you have to have these calibrations, either online where you have to pass them, or the discussions that you have when you're onsite of talking about why certain essays, which don't quite fit into the rubrics, or why certain responses that don't quite fit into the rubrics are one grade over the other. And that back and forth discussion is, is really valuable when it comes time for me to bring this back to my classroom, because when my students do something that doesn't quite fit into the rubric, or that, you know, well, the, the course description says that this is what it should be, but I have no idea. I can help guide my students into the right way to answer a question, or, or at least give them consistent feedback. The interactions with the different people there, the development committee, the chief readers, and the professionals that work for the College Board, and ETS, which is the company that makes the tests, are really important, because that gives you an idea about how these tests are made. Unfortunately, we're kind of governed by standardized tests in education, and being able to master these tests, being able to get our students to actually show what they know on these tools, so that they can perform at the level that we know they're at. But does the test reflect their learning?
Right, and there's, just at the end of the day, if you have enough time, like scoring, and you want more professional development, there's like nighttime debriefing sessions, ETS, you meet with the College Boards, there's either, even beyond.
There's a keynote speaker.
So even beyond the scoring of the day, there's actually other opportunities at nighttime that you can participate in.
Well, my roommate was a professor at Mount Holyoke, so we had a nice pillow talk time at night, talking about different things. That was good, it was, it was great, Bruce was awesome. And, and then there's other things for the students.
So the students, we spend a lot of time learning about what evaluation looks like. That's easily transferable for an educator into creating assessments, because that's just the opposite, that's the other side of the coin. So we have a lot of evaluation of the students' work, we have expertise in scoring, and being able to, like, like Ben said, being able to help the students know what the College Board is looking for, right? So it doesn't matter that I scored about the home front in World War II. What matters is how the College Board wants students to respond to, to questions, and knowing what, how to teach them that skill, right? And how to teach them what it is that they need to be able to show. So you can just plug in the content, it doesn't, that doesn't make a difference, it's very much transferable. And for AP students in particular, we talked about this before, teachers who score have a greater understanding of how the test is scored, and therefore, we can help our kids get a better score. So you...
I do think it helps to have an expert in the room, too.
It does, sorry.
So when you tell your kids, no, this isn't how you do it, they'll listen to you, because they know that that actually isn't how to do it.
They listen to me all the time, anyway. So you might be thinking, how can the school as a whole benefit, right? So how can the, the kids who don't take AP classes, or AP US history, or any other AP class benefit? Again, we can bring this scoring expertise to our colleagues and help them create better assessments, help them score things better, more consistently. A strong AP program will increase our local and national profile. We may be able to say, hey, you know, not only do we offer twelve or so AP courses, but we have teachers who are scoring those, right? That may be enticing to tuition students, for example, or people to move into the district. Also, we have some links to NEASC accreditation. Both, there's a curriculum standard indicator, which is about assessment practices that include the use of specific and measurable criteria for success. And then there is an instruction standard indicator, which asks teachers to be adult learners and reflective practitioners, and maintain expertise in their subject areas. So these are areas that with our visit coming up in 2019, we can put in our reports for NEASC, so.
So to wrap up, I, I felt this is my first time, I didn't really know what I was getting into. But the, the experience was rewarding. I actually feel like I know how to exactly teach some of these questions, where you can see the rubric and you can read the course description, but there's no, there's no way you can get around the actual hands-on working with this stuff, talking to people who have done this for twenty, twenty-five years, becoming a resident expert in a lot of this stuff. And it's, it's, for me, it's going to work its way down into my lower levels of, of Latin, because I control all of Latin.
And, and for the Stats, one side thing is, the, the new SAT, which is, I think, what, two years ago, two years ago, for Stats, is, is a increase in the Stats content on the SAT. So, you know, being an expert in, in Stats and probability kind of helps there, too. And just being that, when the students are in your classroom, and they know they're taking the test in May, they can put a face to, when they say an AP reader who's reading, who's scoring their exam, you're one of, you're one of them. So they kind of put a face with that kind of, that, that phrase, an AP reader. So when you tell them, hey, yes, you have to do this, you should do this, they kind of listen a little bit more, and, and it makes it a little more friendly when it comes to the test, that they're more comfortable when it comes to May when they take the test.
Yep.
Okay, folks, thank you very much. Any board members have any questions or comments for our three presenters?
So when I took AP History in high school, we had two students from, I think, Searsport or Bucksport that did a video. So they were in their classroom in Searsport or Bucksport, and Mr. Hills had this thing on, and we were in that technology room at the top of the ramp with the old academy.
Oh, I'm picturing it.
Are they still, do you guys still offer that, or is that something that's kind of been?
No, we don't, we don't currently have ways of branching out our own AP curricular offerings right now. I think that a lot of schools like Searsport that would want to do that, probably would buy into the AP for All, or like a VHS AP class.
Yeah, because I think that was sort of a getting big type thing.
Right, I think there's more options like Alma through, through VHS and AP for All, and once that was around.
VHS is virtual high school, by the way, it's not what you put in the newspaper.
That was very informative. Lucas and I met before the board meeting tonight. Lucas, would you mind sharing with the board members what your schedule looks like right now?
Well, I'm taking three AP classes this year, so it's going to be quite a demanding year, along with all the other required courses of juniors, which is already a big load for our students. So it's pretty hectic, but it's also exciting.
Aggressive.
Very nice. Lucas headed for the medical profession, Dr. Littori.
Going to dentistry.
What's your reader, do you stay a reader, or do you have to reapply every year?
Basically, is your name stays in, in the pool?
Yep.
So.
Only for a certain number of years.
Yeah, I think there might be a limit, like a term limit on it, like six years or something like that. But it stays in, it stays in the pool, and you can like kind of withdraw for maybe a year. If you go more than a year away, you have to kind of reapply, is that, you know?
But you're not guaranteed.
You're not guaranteed.
You're guaranteed to stay in the pool, but you're not guaranteed to be selected as a reader.
Right.
And often, right, for, for, for Latin, since Latin's so small, the chief reader handpicks everyone, the thirty people that goes. And so if you're someone who wasn't consistent the last time, you might not get picked, or if you didn't work well with the group, then you won't get picked.
Even with massive AP US history, it's a handpicked thing still, too.
Okay, folks, thank you very much, that's very, very informative. Next item on the agenda, for the benefit of the audience, I'll actually read this, because I think, because I do think this is great news for our district. This is the enrollment. Now, I'll give you the enrollment by each school compared from October one, two thousand thirteen, to today. So we'll start from McGrath. McGrath went from three eighteen to three forty-seven. Weatherby, three seventy-one to three forty-one. New Bird, thirteen to twenty. Smith, three hundred and twenty-six to two ninety-seven. Reed's Brook, from three hundred and fifty-eight to three ninety-five. Wagner, two twenty-three to two forty-four. And Hamden Academy from six ninety-two to seven seventy-four. You may also be interested, because I knew you were going to ask this question, how many tuition students do we have? In October two thousand thirteen, we had twenty-six. The next year, we had twenty-eight, next year, twenty-four, next year, thirty-five, and we're now at thirty-seven. And I would agree with the presenters, I think probably the AP may have some incentive for people to look at Hamden Academy. So our enrollment went from twenty-three oh one to twenty-four eighteen.
Didn't we have a, didn't Nick Raymond also share with the board during budget time that we have a waiting list? Or we're not able to accommodate all tuition applicants because of, is that not right?
I'm not aware of any waiting lists.
So those are very good numbers, and I was commenting to someone today, can't remember who it was, but there are not many districts, and I think I said this to you folks before, there are not many districts that are gaining students in the state of Maine.
Tony, you have a question?
When are we going to put an ad hoc committee together to look at building a dorm and recruiting international students? Dover's done it.
Absolutely.
MCI.
Absolutely.
We're just going to attach it to the Librarian House.
Librarian.
Hey, we get that land from Cushing.
We'll keep that in mind, Tony. The next exhibit, for the benefit of the audience and our board, the people sitting around this, this table have the privilege now of leading and governing the twentieth largest district in the state of Maine. Now, no, we just increased that population, because these figures are two thousand eighteen, we were two thousand three eighty-seven, now we're two thousand four eighteen. So RSU twenty-two is indeed the twentieth largest district in the state of Maine, not surprisingly led by Portland, and going down through the districts, it'll probably resonate with us. I do want to make a comment, because I'm sure that the fiscal agents in the group said, why do we have a per pupil cost of twelve thousand, three hundred and forty dollars? And the answer to that is, in this computation, they include all expenses, debt service and transportation. In the state of Maine, per pupil, per pupil cost, remove those, and that's why ours is about ninety-nine hundred, because we're paying off a fifty-two million dollar high school. So that's why that figure is there, if you look at that. So the long and short of it is, about four or five years ago, we were the twenty-seventh largest district in the state of Maine. So you can see, again, the responsibility you folks have every other Wednesday night and meetings in between. We're governing a, a student body of over two thousand four hundred students now, which is, is quite a major task before us. Okay, the next, I don't, I don't want to read this to you tonight, but again, this is the MSMA newsletter, and I've announced a number of times, we'll continue to do so. One of the focal points that we must be looking at this school year is the school funding formula. If you just glance down, there's, I'd like to just highlight verbally two or three, the first bullet talks about no longer taking Title I money, that's federal money. They don't penalize that, they're taking that state money away, that's what that means. We're looking at increasing next year based on the hundred and, what is it, one hundred and thirteen point six million in the second year, the buy-in versus forty-eight point four in the first year, if you want to pay attention. They're looking at a, a greater waiter, weighted pupil count in special education. That's a very significant one, because Lynn, we're hovering around four hundred and ninety children, is that ballpark close?
No, we don't have that many, about four hundred and fifty.
Okay, four hundred and fifty, so, okay, so that's very important to us. The one that resonates for me, twenty years ago, that is if you have a high cost out of district need for special ed children, they're now going to have hardship monies. They had that back in nineteen ninety-five, and that then went away, the waste up, and now they're bringing that back in. They also have a provision whereby, if after our budget was approved, and we had a child move in that required residential placement with special needs and educational technician support, that could cost us around sixty-five or seventy thousand, we can file for hardship monies. That has not been in existence for fifteen to sixteen years. On the back part, they talk about looking at greater allocation for pre-kindergarten programs, that's obviously going to be important to us. I will announce that Mrs. Moore and I now at the forty-nine thousand five hundred, or that's sixty, so we're inching up, we'll keep you informed as we move toward that. Now ironically, what I said five minutes ago, hopefully it will continue, but notice that they're removing a declining enrollment adjustment. That is huge for many districts that are losing. If you're losing a hundred children over three years, they used to average that, now you're going to have to absorb that loss in a given year. That's a big, big loss, because remember, with each child, you reimburse about ninety-two hundred dollars ballpark, so that's a lot of money. The elimination of funding, working toward the transition to proficiency-based diplomas, that I know Mrs. Giard is very concerned about, as well as I am. And then basically, other things that you can read on your own, but the point is, in summation, that we need to be following this very closely as to what is going to be replacing the essential programs and services funding formula in the school funding of eighteen nineteen, that's going to be a major priority for us. Any questions or points on that brief overview with those very significant points there? Okay, certainly, I cannot keep up with Mr. Ditzel, Mrs. Johnson, and Ms. Bexler, but I did find it very interesting. A conference I went to was the art of diplomacy. I passed it up where you just kind of read, it's kind of, it's not humorous, but when you read it, it's kind of like, yes, yes. But the art is how you synchronize and implement all those moving parts. As we, as board members, or parents, or administrators, the art of diplomacy is a very precise skill that gains for all of us in the long run. So I just put that in there for your reading pleasure, more than anything else. Okay, Reagan, your turn. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Lucas, let's give, Lucas, I'm sorry. This is the time that you and Dakota would share with the board any ideas you have, given this is your first meeting, you probably don't have much. But when we come next time, things are going on at Hamden Academy or in the school district, you want to share with the board, so that's the purpose here. And do you want to share it this time, Lucas?
Thank you. Many times, new board members have a lot of pent-up issues that they want to release on the first meeting, so that was good.
That is true. Okay.
All right, so I believe you have my report, and you're, have it. And what I would like to review is for finance, that our audit field work is about to start, that will occur, okay, louder. The FY seventeen audit work will begin on Monday, the eleventh, and that will be the field work portion, so we'll have the auditors in-house. And we have started to let buildings know that folks need to send over certain materials for review, and we expect that to continue for a couple of weeks. They then depart with their field work information, and we expect that the audit report will be delivered to us on December thirteenth. So there's quite a time in between the field work being completed and the report being issued, but we'll keep you in the loop as we receive more information. As far as facilities go, we've enjoyed a very successful summer with several projects. You heard about some of those last month, but what I'd like to report is that we have had lighting projects throughout the buildings, and many of those aspects are complete, especially in Winterport. And our schools in Hamden right now are in the midst of having completion with LED replacements, including exterior lighting. So as you're moving through the building tonight, you may see that folks are actually here doing some of those replacements, and they're also working outside. We also have had a paving project just recently at Reed's Brook at the back parking lot, and we had propane tanks installed at both Smith School and Wagner School. And I would like to commend the contractors, they did not only an efficient job, but a neat job. All of the work we've had done this summer at all of the schools has been really well left. We haven't had to have any people going in behind to clean things up, and the quality's been great. Reed's Brook had a water infiltration project done, we had to remove a window that has been leaking for probably close to a decade. And that project has been completed, and the results also have been high quality, and we're expecting that we'll have a benefit, of course, from not having the leakage any longer.
Should have left it till after the audit.
Maybe so. So tomorrow, we are having a site visit at two of our facilities, Weatherby School and McGrath School, because we did apply to the state for a building project, and a team is going to come to score both of those buildings. And we're expecting those visits to last about two hours in each school. And they have prescribed to us who can be on the team that takes the folks around to see all of the different aspects of the schools. We expect that the scoring will lead to us being placed on a priority order list with eighty other applicants for projects in the state. And it will probably be quite some time before we hear the results, but we'll keep that up to date for you as we hear.
Who will be on that team, Reagan?
They ask that the team be limited to the superintendent or designee, the facilities manager, the school principal, and any specific director, for instance, Kathy Kitteridge with Kitchen Services will be present for the kitchen portion. And we're having our school custodians be at the ready for any demonstrations, discussion, or information. Human resources, we are in the midst of putting forth two hires in the elementary schools for custodians. And we also are moving forward with Target Solutions for online trainings, to try to facilitate more efficient trainings for staff. And Target Solutions is actually an MSMA benefit to us. It's valued at about thirty dollars per staff member, and they allow us to access that for free if we have insurance through MSMA. Transportation, I just want to, can you pass those down to me? We may have to share a few of these. This is the bus transportation, I did deliver these to several of you already today. We'd like to just go over the bus transportation in RSU twenty-two, so you're aware of some of the stats that we have going on, because it's been a very strong start for transportation, and our ridership is up. Twenty-one buses are servicing our school district right now, eleven of those do a second run every day. So we're having thirty-three bus runs, both in the AM and the PM, every day in our four towns. We have one thousand five hundred and thirty-seven students riding the buses, at least last week. You can see the numbers for each of the individual school's ridership last week. We also have five vans that provide service on a daily basis. We have the Shaw Hill Road Bridge out right now, so we're having a van provide service to students who live on Bog Road, because we can't access it on a typical bus route. That will conclude in November. That will conclude in November. Then we have runs to four educational programs, Stillwater Academy, Bangor Regional Program, the New Innovative School for middle schoolers at EMCC, and for students who have special requirements for transportation. The UTC bus ridership is up. We actually had to ask for a second bus this year, which is great news for the attendance there. We have about fifty-nine students in the AM, and it might actually be a little higher than that now, is that true, Bill?
I think we're fifty-nine in the morning and sixty-four in the afternoon, last thing I knew.
Okay. In talking with Melanie from Sierra Bus, we've had some successes right off the bat this year. Deer Hill Lane students had been having quite an extensive ride, both in the morning and the afternoon, and now they're getting home a half an hour earlier by just making a switch in the route. And Bus Thirty-One is getting home earlier as well by a substantial amount. We have bus loading that's switched, and we're now picking up at Reeds Brook first in the afternoons, and Hampden Academy second, and that's allowing for traffic flow to depart the parking lot with students before the buses are trying to get out as well, and that's helping. And we do appreciate, Reeds Brook and Hampden Academy both had to make some adjustments in order to have this happen, and we appreciate that. Smith School bus arrival has improved. We have staff members who are out there as early as seven fifteen, meeting the buses at Smith School. It's been very helpful for the bus company in getting those kids on and off, including pre-K, who, four-year-olds, they need to be met at the bus and escorted in. We're getting to Hampden Academy earlier now because of the earlier drop-off from Smith, so we've had improved arrival. We've also had two new employees hired recently for Sierra Bus. That's been a challenge, as I think you've been aware, hiring bus drivers is a struggle across our region, and we actually have a third person who is a faculty member, Lori Matthews, actually received her bus license late this summer, and she's been driving to help with middle school football. And it's working out fantastic, she, every time you see her, she'll give you a big wave.
Over to you right there, Lori.
There's been improved behavior on the bus for the first week. Smith School actually had the teachers meet with the bus drivers and have a proactive process in place, so there's communication with the school about any behavior that's showing up before it becomes a discipline write-up, and Sierra Bus is very happy with that. And pre-K four-year-olds are able to ride the bus now, in the past, that hasn't always been the case, so that's been a positive. But please know, as you speak to people in your towns, that three-year-olds are not yet old enough to ride, and some pre-K parents have questions about that, but you can imagine a three-year-old on a school bus without a direct supervisor, it's a challenge. Other challenges we have are simply that there are special education students that need to arrive at three different schools at the same time, but they may be traveling to a different town than where they live. So some of the distances to make and the company being able to meet those timelines has been tough. And we'd like everyone to know that when students are dismissed from school, that is not the time they're getting on the bus. So if you ever have a parent call you and say, my child gets out at three, but they're not getting home until four fifteen, they've been on the bus for an hour and fifteen minutes, probably not how it's really working. We dismiss at three, you can imagine it takes a while to pack up, then your bus is called, then you're loading, then there's departure. So we try to keep the literal bus ride itself definitely under the hour, but the times may have challenges very dismissal.
What is the minimum that they have, like a high school kid? Well, high school actually has a little more time probably now, but like Reeds Brook, when they dismiss, how long is it before the bus actually leaves Reeds Brook?
Okay. Reeds Brook is dismissing at two o'clock in the afternoon, and we're trying to get the buses out by two oh five. It's been about two oh six or two oh eight, and so we've been working on getting those times back. And it really does improve once the kids get the routine.
Just out of curiosity, so there's a bus that comes here in the afternoon, it comes up to the front of the building and parks like kitty-corner, blocks traffic. It doesn't go with the other buses, where the other buses load up, it's the very first bus that's here. I'm just curious what that bus is.
That's S A D sixty-three, I bet.
Is it, Bill?
Probably the tuition student from the whole bus.
Yes, is there a reason why they park there, though?
That's got to get out as soon as possible, because they have a deadline to meet elsewhere. So it's the one that actually comes back from UTC, drops students off, and then we jump from there.
They'd probably have to get to Brewer. Good question.
I was just always curious, you know, it's like.
I've seen that, I've seen that bus there many times.
What's that?
We have a rogue driver.
I was trying to get in the window, I was like, what are you doing? I thought that'd be online.
Continuing on that, back in the spring, Emo was talking to DOT about these lights out here, and the bus drivers were asking about the lights, because it's such a short burst, and you get the backup into Hampden Academy. I didn't know if there had been any continuation when you took over that conversation.
I haven't had any conversations with DOT or follow-up, but what has happened is the bus company has made a decision to send the buses out to one A, and they do send, I believe, three buses out to the front light, and they're happy with how that's working. They're getting better efficiency from doing that.
It is, because the traffic backs all the way up.
There was some work done on those lights, right? There was some collaboration with the town?
There was a lot of work back in the June timeframe, they were, spent a lot of time there. I'm not sure what they did, but they were there a long time.
I can inquire with Melanie and ask.
Yeah, because it takes.
Yes, it does.
Four or five cycles, if you're, if you're getting on by the track.
Mm-hmm. Some thought. You want to clear traffic out, so you don't have all those cars and all those pedestrians backing up.
Any else, Reagan?
Just finally, that Rick and I will be headed out on Friday to a Drummond and Witsome conference around a new take on school consolidation. The, the Page administration is very interested in us looking at regional centers, and we're going to hear what the first blush of this would be about, and we can bring back more information to you.
They're looking to have nine to twelve regional centers in the state of Maine, whatever that is going to be defined, so hopefully we'll know that on Friday.
Okay, Reagan, thank you, Karen, how was it? Thank you.
Great, questions of board members?
It's my annual complaint that we go back to school before Labor Day. Every kid that comes through my office, I ask them, when are you going back? And more than half of them went back after Labor Day this year. So obviously UTC, even though we have to mirror UTC, a lot of the other districts are like, we're going back after Labor Day. Just my annual complaint.
That's a good point, so when I bring the first reading of the calendar to you in probably the January timeframe, we can look at that again, see what we can do. But Tony, remind what Tony was mentioning, for new board members, you have to be within five days with UTC as a region. You can't deviate from that. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, I shouldn't say this, but I'm going to, I think Bangor's teacher contract actually requires them to start after Labor Day. Michelle, can you comment on that?
It does.
So, there you go, Reagan, thank you. So there's a provision that they can't.
So we have how many going to UTC?
We can put that on the negotiations.
Sixty-four? No, one twenty, because it's one after. So a hundred and twenty out of twenty-four hundred students is dictating the start date of the school, unless, I just frame that up every year.
When does UTC look at the calendar, Alan, do you know?
No, we've never discussed the calendar, the board.
So it's not determined by the board, it's leadership?
It's superintendent, it's the superintendent group usually in the December, January timeframe.
Robbing kids of their summer vacation.
I was anxious, so, I was like, let's go back. All right.
It does not speak up, it does present a problem for us. I like going back before Labor Day. Gets a good start, gives us more flexibility in the year, but when we're sending half of those students all home with bus notes half their day, or not bus notes, but notes so they can go home, they're attending the school half the day, and then go home for the other half of the day, it's a, it's an ease-in to the school year, I guess, for some, but it's a little odd, a little odd that we went three days without them attending the UTC program. I don't know if there could be something done with UTC that we could actually send them there for the first few days, or if that just won't happen.
So we, they just go home?
Yeah, they don't, well, we can't, if we keep them there, we don't have a place for them, because they'd normally be in their program, so our classrooms are full, so it's a holding pattern. We kept them the first day, go through some stuff, and then Thursday and Friday, it was, we made sure we gave them notes so they could come for their academic courses instead of going to UTC, they went home.
It's actually opposite of what Tony thought, I think. What happened was, we started school, but UTC hadn't started. And so our UTC kids have nowhere to go.
So there's no reason for us to start, because I thought we always started because UTC started before Labor Day, but if they're not.
That's right. They're not.
But there must be days inside of our schedule that we opted out of.
There are, like, we have in-service days where UTC may be in, we're not in school, but UTC is, so they flip to that. But, I mean, Tony brings up a very good point, that's how we have to synchronize that among, what are they, eleven high schools, we rate of every area, that we all have to come together.
That starting day is an issue for them, too. I know last year, they were quite proud of the fact that on the first day of UTC, they had all their students there. And that was the first time ever. Some years, it's two to three weeks before some of the districts start showing up, and it really puts a problem, because the instructors can't start teaching the classes till they have all their students there. But it's been an issue for them, too.
Okay.
Any other questions, Scott?
Yeah, I have, I received another set of letters, and I emailed out from Chloe Lawrence to the board when I received, and I received it actually the day after our last board meeting, but one of the students, Josie Lawrence, asked if I would read her letter at the next meeting. I'm going to read two portions of it. It's very well-written, relatively long, and I don't want to take up a great deal of time reading it, but she did ask that it be read. So she says, "To make concern, when I heard that the high school halftime art position was being cut and then moved to kindergarten and first grade, I felt confused and discouraged. I understood that the board had to make unforcet decisions when it comes to budget cuts, but I can't make sense of this one. The board should reconsider this choice, because high school students need art much more than kindergarten and first grade. The switch would do more damage than good. I don't actually take art classes, my sister Chloe and a handful of my friends do, and I know how beneficial art has been for their learning experience. I am a music kid, music is where I can create and perform art. Luckily for me, the music program here is well-funded. However, music isn't everyone's forte. Not everyone wants to sing or play an instrument in front of large crowds. To those non-musicians, art is a great option, except that it is already less funded by the school. Taking this position away will only make the imbalance in funding between music and art more extreme. Normally, I would be behind adding more art into education with this art position in kindergarten and first grade, but not at the expense of the high school artists who need art much more. At the high school level, students are dive deeper into studying what art is and can apply it to their future careers. I hope the board will keep the art position at the high school, it is what is best for our students. Thank you, Josie Lawrence, senior at Hampden Academy." And I will, like I did with the last set of letters, I'll get into it, make them again, they can send copies, everybody, so you can actually see the whole letter that was written.
And may I, may I suggest to, and when we get asked to share certain public comment that we do, so during public comment, maybe after we give people an opportunity to come forward, at the end of that, we'll close it with any public comment that we're asked to share.
Sure.
Just in terms of time.
Yep.
Thanks, Scott.
Then I have my question.
Go for it.
I've noticed a couple of times, and I've talked to Michelle about it, that there are times when it would be very helpful to have a teacher's voice in our discussions, where we are talking about something, and it would be great to be able to get a direct comment from somebody who actually works at the school. And I was considering the option of having some kind of teacher rep to sit at the board table, something akin to the level of involvement that the students have. It is, it is a different thing to raise your hand out here and try to insert yourself into a discussion than it is to be seated at the board table and be able to make a point directly. I'm not thinking of a board member, but somebody who would be involved in the discussion more actively. It was a thought that I had, because it just seems like there are a number of times where our discussions move in a direction where it would be helpful for the board to get some kind of input, or to have an individual that we could address something to and say, could you get information for this, and then bring it back? And we have, I think, probably ways we could do that now, but there's nothing that is easy, that we could, as far as a method of doing that now, and this would accomplish that. So that was something that I was thinking about, and I wanted to bring that up at the table. I also wanted to mention that although I am really excited for Ann, and I'm very glad that she has this opportunity, that I'm really sad for our district. You know, we, at the Community Relations Committee, we've been working with Ann, going over some possible methods of getting information out, and her passion for the job and her understanding of the job is just unparalleled. So although I'm happy for her, that she is moving on, I wanted to at least express that I'm sad about it, I guess, if you can best put it. Yeah, those are the two things that I had.
Thank you, Sean.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll go into committee reports and finance committee.
Yep, met on the twenty-second. Took me a second, I read this over, and we talked about approving our finance exhibit that we look at every month, and Alan brought up the point that at UTC, the full board at UTC approves the finance. I guess, what would you call it, the funding?
Yeah, that those monthly financial statements show the percentage left, amount spent.
But, but where we have, they don't have finance committees, so we wouldn't necessarily need to do that at a full board. So we decided that we'll start, we'll approve those, that report monthly as we meet, or bi-monthly as we meet, as a committee. So we did that, we went over it, Ann was there, of course, to help us go over that, and that's just something that we're going to start to do, and the finance committee will approve that. But as I looked at this, I said, who is Mitchell? And Mitchell and Gordon approved it, and then it took me like five minutes to figure out it was Miller. Because I was like, we have it, we had a Mitchell, and then I said, oh yeah, Cindy was, you know. But, but Miller and Gordon did approve that. So then we looked at regulation BD CB. This is a regulation that we actually brought, I think we brought it to the full board last spring and showed the full board. Regulations aren't something that we vote on, but we had some considerable discussion around some of the things that we wanted to amend with that regulation. One of them was like emergency situations with warrants. We've seen that, we're signing warrants on Tuesdays and Thursdays, or Wednesday mornings, Friday mornings, and we have some situations where maybe a teacher is going to a professional development training Tuesday morning, and they need, they need that check like Monday night, and so there are, has been some situations where, you know, is it okay to send that check out? And we've been receiving, as finance committee members, we've been receiving like an email that says, is it okay? But what we've decided is, we'll put like a thousand-dollar cap on, to allow the superintendent to send those checks out without actually including a finance committee member. I assume probably we may still get an email that says that happened, but it won't be asked and waiting for that email to come out. Well, it could be the teacher could be standing in that superintendent's office waiting for that check as they have to go. So there's things like that, there's, there's field trips, just things that we don't want to, we don't want to hold up a busload of kids that need to go on a field trip and need to have a check, so we put a thousand-dollar cap on that, and we felt pretty reasonable that that was something that was going to be okay. The, we talked about debit card use, there's, especially Amazon, we order a lot of stuff through Amazon, it's all debit card transactions. So we basically did the same thing with that, there'd be a thousand-dollar limit on that as far as a debit card transaction. We also talked about maybe making that a actual credit card versus a debit card, where there's more protection with a credit card versus debit. And then we looked into, we talked about warrant signing procedures. As far, like I said, as of right now, we're signing warrants sometime afternoon on Tuesday and before Wednesday morning, so that those checks can go out. Same thing on Thursday, afternoon to Friday morning, so it doesn't really give, and as of, three of our, three of our finance committee members, two of them have to sign. So we're talking, and it doesn't do any good to put six people on the finance committee, because the policy actually reads that the two-thirds majority has to sign, so if we put six, we just need four people to go in. So it doesn't really help us that. But, so we discussed possibly just sending checks out once a week, so that we could minimize the amount of times that board members had to go in. And I don't know where we're at on that. Reagan was going to check with administration and see what kind of, you know, we really didn't know what that was going to cause for an issue, so.
So I have spoken to the admin council to kind of weigh this on their mind around if they feel we could make that.
So I have spoken to the admin council to kind of weigh this on their mind around if they feel we could make that shift, or if they feel there is too many situations where we should stay with two. So they'll be getting back to me at another admin council meeting.
And then along in our meeting.
What do other districts do? Can we look, can we ask our other districts what expectations and what they, what they have laid out for their finance committee for that? I mean, we compare ourselves to other districts all the time, let's, let's have a benefit.
I think many, well, I don't know this, but I believe that probably a lot of districts are not adhering to that policy quite as strictly as we are, without signing warrants, and some of them are probably going. So, I mean, we're just, I think we're doing a good job adhering to that, but.
It's a lot, it's a lot to ask of you all on the finance committee. I mean, I wouldn't be able to commit to that. So thank you for doing that, the three of you.
And so, last part of our meeting, we had our auditor there, Shane White. And we discussed some options for an additional audit, above and beyond what we do now. We had a few different options, kind of spelled out, kind of areas that we thought we could look into. And we kind of settled on a couple of different options. One was a cross, and it, kind of like looking into different entities that we perform audit, no, I mean, transactions for, mainly VZ. There's, we have a few different, we have PrEP, we have, we have an organization for the.
Mary's.
Mary's organization, and then we have VZ. But, I mean, we, we hear the scuttlebutt in the community that people wanna see what, you know, look into VZ, so we felt that that was an area to look into. And the other was warrant procedures. We've had, like I said, we've heard things in the community also. We did have a list, and we, we have it, like you said, we're recommending that to the board. But we kind of wanted to bring it to the board. If anybody else had some ideas that they really wanted us to look into, as far as the finances for the district, something that we're not, that is something we could go above and beyond on an audit, then, I mean, we would be interested in listening to what you had.
Dave Barrett, I know, I think I brought his name up last time. He, he, he had a name for a particular kind of audit, and this might be what he was referring to. But it was an audit that wasn't a forensic audit by any means, but looked at process as well as numbers, like checks and balances. And I can't remember what he said, but he told me the name to add of the audit, so that I could then relay that to Regan, and I forgot five years later.
Was it agreed upon procedures? Is that what he was doing?
I'll, I'll try to get back in touch with him and get that. Wally knows him well, probably a lot of people know him well, so I'll try to get it and get it to you. It might be the same thing that you guys have talked about, I just don't know.
And we had a list, did you, did you have that list that you could share with the group? The list that we had, the list of different, Regan and Ann had met with Shane earlier, and they had kind of like drafted out a bunch of different areas that we could target. It was kind of, you know, and Regan made a good point during the meeting. It's all, you know, we can invest as much money as we want, making sure that we're doing everything right, but in the end, we gotta remember that we're taking away from children. I mean, this is money that we're taking away from children. So we wanna make sure that where everything is correct, and we're doing the proper procedures, but we, we just need to remember that we are taking away money that could be used to educate children, one way or another.
With these two additions, do you know how much more money that it would cost us yet?
It wasn't a lot of money, under ten thousand, yeah.
Because he had already, one of the things we asked him to do was to go through the VZ, so, and he's already done it for the town, so we thought that's a good idea.
So he's auditing it twice?
Well, he's basically using what he's already done and preparing a report that's addressed to us, addressing our side of the equation. He's already done it for the town, so that saves a significant sum of money.
Yeah, okay. So some other ideas that we had, besides the warrant procedures and the cross entities transactions, were cash handling procedures, checkbooks, gate receipts, food service, school checkbooks and student activity accounts, purchasing, purchase orders, analyzing efficiencies around that, and then oversight, such as invoices, postings, and so forth. So that was the list that we had.
What would you need to know? I mean, in terms of if you, if you wanted to add different audit possibilities?
It's, he can do it anytime. It wasn't tied to our current audit, and I asked him that.
It's not additional to that?
He can do it, and that's why, because he's already working on our, our audit now. And I asked him that, is it something that we need to decide on, so that you could tie it into that? And it's not, he can just do this anytime.
We also can define a scope of work and phase it in, so we could say that we would like to have four or five of these categories fulfilled, but we want to take three years to do it. It's just a matter of how quickly we feel results on different categories are necessary, and prioritizing what we do first. And that's really what our discussion was about in the finance committee.
And it can be something that we take in phases. We could do something additional every year if we wanna look at a different phase. You know, if we wanna dig into something a little bit more every year, we could, we can add something every year to that, you know, if we decide to do so. And then we talked about goals for the finance committee in the last year. And like I've said before, the finance committee is so different than what we had three years ago. It was, three years ago, we were just signing warrants, now we're actually a working committee. So we're kind of learning as we go. But we talked about our different goals for the next year, which, in the sense that our meeting, our, our goals may have changed, because we're losing our, our account. So we may need to change our goals a little bit.
I have a new goal.
We may have some new goals, but we, we talked about paperless protocols, electronic purchases, electronic leave requests, electronic time cards. These are all things that Ann's had, you know, in the back of her mind, working with, you know, and on that, as far as that goes, I mean, we, like Scott said, losing Ann is a big blow to our district. But one thing that we have going for us in our district, I've been a part of a couple hiring committees, is we attract wonderful people. And so even though it is a blow to the district, I mean, I think anything, any negative can be turned into a positive, so, kind of, who knows? And then we talked about budget rollout, communicating early. So after, probably after Christmas, we'll start talking about budget in the finance committee, before it kind of goes to the budget committee. And then policy development and revision. We'll keep looking at our policies as they pertain to finance and work with them as, as we go through. Like I said, the finance committee is kind of almost a new committee in the way that we're using it, so I think we just need to keep an eye on our policies. And that wrapped us up, we did all that in forty minutes.
I'm impressed.
No, it was all, an hour and a half, we started at fifteen.
Great work.
One, one question?
Yeah.
You talked about the, the finance committee hearing the, the financial report. And I had, so we, we're still gonna be getting a quarterly for the new report. And will that then be the breakdown of, to some, at some level, the line item budget saying X percentage is expended, or, or, you know, we'll see the, the budget for the fiscal year that we're currently in, the percentage of that that's expended, and we can have a discussion about where we are, what, if, you know, if we're halfway through the year, but we're seventy percent expended, is that, is that the expectation?
And it'll look, yep, like that. And the ones that we.
That's true.
Is, is that the one, the one we show the full board, will that be the one cut? That'll be that one there? Okay.
And that's, that's what we were, we were receiving in the packet previously. And then we changed to quarterly, but we'll.
Second meeting of every month, we're planning to do this. So we're, we're planning, although the policy requires quarterly, we're going to report to you monthly.
Okay, we were just worried if we went quarterly, we would forget the quarter.
You also saw it have the column encumbered in there, which is a very important column. What you've encumbered, excuse me.
Absolutely.
Good, that'll be great. Budget committee, I'm sure, doesn't have anything. Athletic committee, did the athletic committee meet?
We haven't met since, no.
Okay. Building committee, you had a meeting tonight?
We did.
Do you have anything to report?
Yeah, there were a couple of, two major items discussed. One is the drainage project down at Smith School. We have a drainage pipe that goes across adjoining property that we don't own, and it needs to be replaced. So we've taken a bid from Hughes Brothers to do the work for like seventy-one hundred and fifty dollars. But, but the neighborly economies want to exchange easements with us. We have no easement for that pipe that is on the property, and they're utilizing some of our land for landscaping around their house without an easement. So that's an ongoing negotiation right now, of how we're going to handle the easement situation. But we are moving ahead to try to get the pipe replaced. It's causing flooding and problems with their buildings, and it needs to be fixed. The other issue was the, the new tank that the Winterport Water District wants to place on school property. And we've hired an appraiser to look at, to give us some idea of value, of what are we giving them for value. Because in return, we'll be getting much better water pressure in the Wagner School, which presently does have some issues. And of course, in the public component of it, we are giving up a two-hundred by two-hundred, an acre of land for this. We wanna know what it's worth. And it was on a real fast track. Supposedly, the district had to complete construction by December thirty-first. And apparently, they've gotten a waiver of that, so it'd just be planning this year and construction next year. So it's not the hurry that it was.
Good.
And then Regan already touched on some other things, the, the audit that we're going on tomorrow. And what else, a couple of other things, but that's, those are the major points, anyways. But I would point out, they've been doing some lights here at this school, too. If you came in, maybe you noticed, they were doing lighting downstairs. That's part of the LED lighting project for the whole district. And also, some of the propane tanks are all installed at the Smith School. I don't know if the other schools, Wagner's done.
We were waiting on Reeds Brook because of the garden or something, is that it?
And because of the schedule for contractors, and then, of course, winter not being viable, we're just going to wait until school gets out in June, and then immediately start the Reeds Brook project.
Thank you, Alan. Education committee?
Yep, we met right before the meeting, and there were three major things on the agenda. We spent most of the time with a presentation from our math coaches in the district, who are not here anymore, I don't think. Oh, Sue, Sue, sorry, Sue. So there are some, they presented what math coaching was, and it's really a great opportunity to provide additional support. It's almost like a peer support to our teachers. So we talked about how to, how to illustrate the value that that will bring to our district over the next year, so that's fantastic. There's some plan to train teachers, which are this, Mary? Supporting teachers in creating SLOs, student, student learning objectives, so that they receive more training and support around how to develop SLOs. Yeah, did I say that right? And then Mary just quickly went over, there are a number of teacher leadership opportunities and initiatives happening in the district right now. And I could list them all, but the real point was that our teachers are really stepping up. There's a number of leaders stepping in our, up in our district and just doing amazing things that we don't. We often, I think, go unheard, and so it was really nice to have this long list of teacher-led initiatives happening.
How was SMARC attendance, did that meeting happen already, or is that coming up?
It will happen on Monday.
Okay. Hopefully, you have good attendance, I appreciated the email you sent out, Sue. What you sent out.
Yeah, the people joining, and I think there's a lot of energy around it right now, and a lot of positive mood going, absolutely.
Good, great. Wonderful, thanks, Amanda. Policy committee, John, do you have anything in addition to what's on the agenda for consideration?
No, I don't believe so.
UTC, Alan?
Yeah, we had a board meeting on the twenty-four, and it was just before the school opened, so there wasn't a lot dealing with the school. There were some new hires we had to do. There was also an executive session, and after the executive session, the board voted to give Greg Miller, who's the director, a leave of absence till December thirty-first to deal with personal issues. And he's getting fifty days paid, and the rest would be under the Maine Family Leave Act. And at the end of that time, he, he will have to make a decision as to whether he wants to return or not. This will give us the board time to find a new director if we have to. In the meantime, Marty Gray, who was the dean of students, was promoted to, or, was promoted to an assistant director and then appointed acting director. And then we are now looking for a per-dean dean of students to fill in some of the things that he won't be able to do.
Thank you. Behavior Review, Education Foundation, and Spruce Board, do you have anything?
Spruce Board, we're gonna be talking about.
Yeah. Tibbetts Fund, I'm assuming you know. Ad hoc, while he's not here, Community Relations Committee?
Yes, so we had a previous meeting on August eighth, which was just after our, our last board meeting, where we discussed a number of different things. One, which was, was picked up at our, the meeting we had yesterday, which was talking about getting BIOS done for the board members. And the point of this was, we discussed, to a degree, sort of trying to humanize some of what happens in the district. And if you go and look at, at the board right now, it has our names, and it has the committees that we're on, and you can email us. But there isn't anything about us. And, you know, there, for each of us, there's something that got us on the board, there are things that we do outside the board, and so we were hoping to get some BIOS in, oh, excellent, it's right there. And Regan's gonna hand out sort of a mock-up of what we were thinking about. We discussed, I don't know if we landed on it, but giving board members the opportunity to come into one of the picture days that happens at one of the schools, so that we can have consistency across the platform for how your picture will be displayed. Because if we each, you know, gave a picture, and we all used our Facebook profile picture or whatever, it, it would be, it would vary wildly, I guess is a good way to put it. Unfortunately, the question was asked, and it does appear that the laser background is no longer on. Which is too bad, but Tom was heartbroken. But, so we, we, it would basically be a way for people to get a quick look at who is on the board. And then, and Nate brought up, quite rightly, that by using sort of the template of the way the high school lays it out right now for staff, there's a picture, there's their name, you click on their name, and it brings you to their biography. So you would have the, the chance to look at it there. And then you could also send an email to somebody right from that point. So the, this gives you an idea of sort of what we're, what we're hoping for, a little bit about you, and a little bit, some, at least one thing that is not school board, school board related that you do, some hobby you have, or something along those lines. The audio, we had, this was from our meeting yesterday. We had a great presentation here in the library around a new audio system. We had discussions a while ago about adding microphones and what that would, what that would mean. And I think we were in the range of about twenty-four grand for the low end. We had a presentation yesterday that brought that number down to fifteen grand for the original proposal, roughly fifteen grand. And then at that meeting, we were able to deduct roughly fifteen hundred dollars from that, and there, but the, the final, the proposal has not been finalized, so we have not received any proposal to even discuss, to, to bring to the board. But we had, it was wireless microphones. There would be one set of microphones for every two people sitting at the table. There would be a speaker that would be set up here. And we, Pits and Riggs and I sat in the back, and people who were not addressing the microphone were clearly audible. So it would be a really nice change for folks who are sitting in the audience in terms of their ability to hear. We also looked into the possibility of, if we were to purchase a system like this, what other uses could it have within the school system? And there are actually a fair number of things that we thought of right off the bat. And there are actually a fair number of things that we thought of right off the bat. So, that's something that we are working on, because improving the audio quality would be great. Oh, and also, the audio from that could be plugged directly into the camera. So, each person, as they are speaking and addressing, so long as your microphone is on, your audio would not go through the air into a microphone, it would actually go directly into the same audio that we are trapping right now, so, or the same video that we're trapping right now. So, that would be wonderful. We discussed, I have two sets of minutes, because we only had the one meeting this past afternoon. Oh, some of the recent happenings. We had posted on the Facebook page when Mary Jarred, the curriculum director at Hampton Children's Day, was giving away stuffed animals and books. And I know that my, both my sons, my seven and nine-year-old, both got a stuffed animal they absolutely adore. And, we posted that on the Facebook page with just a couple of pictures. And that had a reach of, that was three, a little over three times greater than anything that we had done previously. You know, the, unfortunately, the posting of minutes has not been like really drawing people into the Facebook page.
It's not viral.
Yeah, it hasn't gone viral yet. But, that was a big success. And after our last meeting, after the August eighth meeting, Mary had suggested an idea about RSU twenty-two Rocks.
Yeah.
And this has been a really successful use of social media and getting people in the school community, the larger community, just sort of involved with the school in a sort of ancillary way, with the district in ancillary way. It's been very successful. Currently, the Facebook page, RSU twenty-two Facebook page, has three hundred forty-five likes and fifteen more people who wanted to follow us but did not want to like us. And the RSU twenty-two Rocks page already has a hundred and fifteen likes. And everybody likes them enough to actually like them.
That's because we're cool.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. And it's been very successful. And actually, I just saw RSU twenty-two Rocks is going to be...
At the community supper on Saturday.
Thank you.
And we're going to have a paint table.
Excellent. So, that'll be very cool. John, Amanda, have I left things out? I'm scanning the minutes and I don't want to go over every single thing that we talked about, but those are the big things.
But, we went over the survey.
Oh, yes, the surveys. Yes, we did. So, everybody remembers that surveys were sent out. We got, we had a number of surveys come back, but there was one school that had not yet turned them in, so we don't have any final results on...
We have another stack this week to focus.
Yes, on where the interest lies. And, a lot of people filled out the paper survey. Many fewer went online to the Google form and filled that out, which is the reverse of how I anticipated it being. But, some, actually, some of the results we got of the surveys actually tend to suggest that that's the way people like to do things too. So, we will, we will report back on the results of the surveys and actually, we will probably have put together some kind of a...
I just do a few at a time, it's very time consuming.
Yes, well, and...
And reading, helping with the...
Right, and we should discuss that, because that's something that I think the committee was willing to help with too, in terms of doing data entry and reading through things. I think that's it.
Is that good? Good job. I love the RSU twenty-two Rocks idea. I saw that and I'm like, oh, positive story, it's fun and kids would love that, so, good idea.
Oh, I also, I do want to mention too, if anything is going on in any, any school or any department that would benefit from greater social media engagement or that would, that the district would benefit from people knowing about, the RSU twenty-two page is there for district events. Each, you know, school has their own way of getting things out, but I'm always happy to put things on that make, that are district-specific things, so please let me know or let Nate know.
And kind of related to that, but also following up last meeting conversation regarding free and reduced lunch, I think Kathy's done a good job of getting the word out to parents for the first week of school regarding that application, using a couple of different opportunities to communicate to parents this past week and then posting it on Facebook as well. So, I just want to, she's not here right now, but thank her for that effort.
Yeah.
Good. Policy consideration, John?
Yes. The committee is recommending approval of second reading and adoption of policy J I C K. There's been no changes since the first reading. So, information for that. Motion to approve?
Would we approve second reading of policy J I C K?
Second.
Bullying?
Any discussion questions? Great. All those in favor? Any votes? Good. I just lost the agenda a whole one moment. Because that was it, right, John? That was all you had on the agenda today?
Yeah.
Okay. For bold business, inter-local agreement within the Spruce, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I do. This is the formal process for looking for adoption. And we'd like to thank and welcome Greg Levitt. Greg is the program coordinator. Greg, do you want to give any overview about the inter-local agreement from your perspective? Yes, come right up here, please. Thank you for coming.
Sure. Do you want an overview of the school itself?
Just what do you think is relevant to move into the, to the formal vote, so...
Oh, okay, all right. Yeah, I don't have a copy of the agreement, I can tell you a little bit about the school running if you want.
That'd be great.
That'd be good, okay.
That'd be good, Greg.
All right. Yes, we started an innovation school this, this year. It's a regional alternative ed program under the Spruce government's structure. And it's designed for hands-on experiential learning for kids in seventh, eighth grade to kind of get them on that pathway to perhaps go to UTC or maybe, you know, East Main Community College later on or any other post-secondary opportunity. We are housed at East Main Community College, so it's, this grant, EMCC is a partner in it along with UTC. And we have three classrooms on the second floor, Pronto Scott Hall. We also have a maker space over in Scooda College, which is the next building over. And again, we've got two teachers and an ed tech and they've done a fabulous job this summer of working on designing some hands-on units, experiential learning, you know, hot air balloon type things where they can work in some applied learning, applied math and so on. They've also connected with a lot of the department heads at EMCC, so they've been collaborating on some things to do with them to kind of get the students exposed to some of the career pathways that are available there. Currently, we have thirty-one students enrolled right now and we're getting more every day. I got a couple, a couple of contacts today for some more students. I think we have about ten schools represented right now amongst those thirty-one students. And we're off to a good start. Kids seem to be excited about it, parents seem to be excited about it. We've had an open house about a week ago before the school started, so...
And Dr. Glenn Cross, you have how many students?
Yeah, we had, we have three right now.
Great, great.
And Mr. Rue has two from each...
Mr. Rue has two, so we have five from each, so, great.
It's been great, Mr. Levitt's been a big help with the open house and a lot of communication and an opportunity for parents to go over there and meet the staff. It really provides an alternative avenue for students who are disengaged from school. I've longed, for many, many years, I thought that, you know, we need to find a program such as this to engage students who are bright, have a lot to contribute, but for one reason or another are disengaged from school. And this really seems to be an opportunity for, for helping those students move forward with their education.
This would be a great opportunity. So, tonight, I'm asking you to endorse in a formal way the inter-local agreement that all school districts are required to embrace. As Greg mentioned before, you said ten so far, did you?
Ten, yeah, I think there's fourteen.
So, our goal is to have all fourteen. So, I would ask for your recommendation of the inter-local agreement that's presented to you this evening.
So, moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
I think it's also important to note, unlike this regional room, which is very expensive to send children to, this is, the per-people cost is about the same as the cost to educate someone in the regular classroom.
Actually, it's free this year.
Free this year.
This year, right, but...
Thank you. But, that's right, you're exactly right, Amanda, yeah. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments? All those in favor?
Thank you. Greg, thank you very much for your participation. Last time I was with you, a couple of weeks ago, your number was eighteen, so now we're up to thirty-one, that's great news.
Forgot a lot last week.
Thank you, Greg, for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Student assessment data.
Mrs. Jarred?
Yes. So, administrators are going to be popping up here too, so, I think it's easy to follow on us. So, we need to set up the Apple TV, please.
Who has the laptop?
Hope you can get me all set up. May I pop over here, just so it's easier? So, as you know, we've had state testing that we are required to do each year. And, as you may remember, last year in the spring, we had quite a bit going on. The administrators, I sent information to them almost daily on different changes and shifts and so forth as we went along, and teachers included, so we all had a pretty good sense of humor. What we've got here today is we've received, I had gotten preliminary information that the other administrators and I looked at and so forth. And so, the information that we're going to share with you now comes from the State Empower Me, which is the MEA testing for English Language Arts in Mathematics. And that happens in grades three through eight. It also includes the assessment results from the main educational assessment science testing. That happens at grades five, eight, and eleven. And it also, today, we're including from our two primary schools, our second grade, because they don't start taking the same state-level tests, we're including the N W E A, the Measures of Academic Progress data review, and then finally, the high school SAT that we'll be looking at, both ELA and math. And so, each administrator is going to be coming up and sharing, and I'll just keep the slides going for them. But, some general information, as I mentioned, we have received that information. The state results for all main schools become available to the public in late December and individual student results will be available supposedly on September twenty-fifth. So, that information will be available for parents. Students who are at the high school level should have received SAT results directly from the college board, so if people need additional information, we'll certainly send that their way. Generally, the testing went smoother than it did the year before. As you remember, we had just switched to a new assessment two years ago. And so, last year was a bit smoother, hopefully this year will be really smooth. They've established the dates that will be in the spring of two thousand eighteen. And each building principal is going to provide an overall assessment data piece as well as how the results from that information will inform where we're headed for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, what we're going to be doing with it this year. So, we're going to start off with McGrath. Just be nice and loud.
I'll use my gay girl voice. As you know, we don't have anything at second grade as far as the MEA. So, I present a snapshot of our N W E A, which is a computerized test done starting at second grade. And this is a snapshot of the fall scores to the spring, so it's the same cohort of students. It shows the progress made and this is a great picture of what you would want to see. The very first category is low, the blue is the fall scores and the red is the spring scores. We would want that to look like that, meaning that less students fell into the low category. And as you look, the numbers get better as you look at the average, the spring scores are higher, high, average, same thing, and then the high. Now, this is for ELA. And even with just this data here, the really, the really important part is that out of those ninety-seven students that took the assessment, ninety of them showed growth. Do we want it even better? Absolutely. But, this is great. And the reading scores, the literacy scores in the fall, sixty-eight percent of the students met the benchmark at that time. When you take the test again in the spring, the benchmark obviously is higher because the expectations are higher. And at that time, seventy-six percent of our students met the benchmark. So, that was very promising. We get to the math data. I was a little discouraged to see this, because when you look, it's not the same as you saw for the ELA. And I think that we're seeing that as a trend through the district, so I think that we'd make some great changes. But, just looking at this, this is a snapshot, again, this is the same cohort of students showing, it looks like when you look at this, you'll see that the fall, there was a lower number in the low, but then it seems to grow. And that's not the kind of trend that you want to see. The low average stayed the same, the average grew, but then the high average dropped, and we don't like to see that, and the high dropped. Now, we'll leave, the benchmark is higher, so you have the expectations higher, but still, that, that was discouraging to see that. Again, looking at it, though, still the same data, out of the ninety-seven students that took this test, ninety of them made growth, which is great. Did they make as much growth as we wanted? No. And so, then the next slide is how we're addressing that. I did make some changes, I apologize that yours is supposed to say exactly the same thing, but just to let you know that this is the first time these students have taken this type of standardized test, so there is that learning term of learning how to take a test. While not all students made enough growth to get to the next level, ninety out of ninety-seven made growth in both math and literacy. And just to let you know that the information displayed on the previous two slides was showing the percentage of students that fell into that category. So, after analyzing the results, the math did not show the expected growth that we want. So, we're addressing this by having a consistent math program across regular education and special education. So, no matter where a student is getting their instruction, it's going to be consistent and I think that's going to be key. The other part of it is that we're all being trained, an excellent, we're having excellent training on this, on using this new math program in order to implement it with its fidelity. And I think that that's very important to know as well. And then below, I just have some, just some more statistics, that at the end of the year, seventy-six percent of those students met the benchmark in reading and seventy-seven percent of the students met the benchmark in math. Any questions?
Questions? When is the training, Kristin?
We went to one on Friday before school started, it was a day-long training, it was excellent. She took us through the, not only the whys of Envision, like why would it be set up the way that it is? Because as you know, the previous math program was more of a spiral where you would touch on a number of topics and then come back to them. This is more of a mastery program, so it was, there was talk about why that's important. And, so she basically laid out how the program works, where to find things. And the teachers were very encouraged at the end of the, at the end of that initial training.
Two trainers. We have one through K-two and one through three-five.
Which was great. We had the K-two training at McGrath and the three-five training at Wetherby and Smith joined us in those two places. It was great. And Kristin did a very nice job explaining the second grade NEA data, so this is the same graph that you just saw, except it's Smith School. And as you can see, we also, we had a very nice growth at Smith School for our second graders in the NEA. I think that's, you know, we took a lot that were at the very low and we helped move them up to the average standard. So, I thought we did, I was very proud of that, we did it really hard in math. And math also, we showed, we showed a lot of growth in math as well. We took a lot of those children who had a hard time the first time and we really worked on those skills and we moved them up where we want to see them. So, this is the third grade, begins the empower test, which is the state test. We are comparing last year's to the year before, so the two thousand fifteen, sixteen to the two thousand sixteen, seventeen. And as you can see, again, we made some growth. We have a long ways to go, our scores, you know, were below the fifty percent level in all of them. So, we have a long way to go, but I think we are showing that we have made some growth. Again, this one is a little different because it's not the same cohort of kids, so it just happens to be the third grade and the fourth grade who come through.
So it just happens to be the third grade and the fourth grade who come through. It's not necessarily comparing them one year to the next. So it's a little different than the NWEA. And this is our math, and again, we have successfully moved some of the students out of the very low to more of an average range, which is what we want to see. And of course, again, we want to continue to bring all these scores up and make progress. And how do we intend to address these results? We will continue with our Title I Math and Reading. Again, like Kristen said, the fidelity to the new math program, which I think will be fantastic, and teachers are actually already very excited about it. We have the Math Coach against Smith, which has been a great addition for us. We continue to do the Momentum Project, which is tying literacy and technology together, that's through the state. And we are also still a focus school, which is, this is our fifth year. It was supposed to last three years, but because of the change in the state testing, they've had a difficult time deciding how schools can exit. So we're still hanging in there, which is fantastic for us because we receive monies and we receive professional development, and it gives us a tool to put all our data in. So, you know, in actuality, it's a great benefit for us, so we continue with Focus School.
Any questions for Dawn?
A quick question. How do you, what do you attribute, so math was a big concern after, you know, the results we saw last year.
Sure.
Yet your NWEA math data is not bad. I mean, you had a significant number, you know, you were almost 40% below in the fall, but then in spring, you brought that number down below 20 with your average increasing and your high increasing. High average came down just a little bit. What do you attribute that to?
Fantastic teachers. I mean, I really, I have to say, I think the teachers really worked really hard. We take the NWEA data, we just, you know, tear it apart, and we target those needs. And I really think the teachers really, the second grade teachers work hard.
And the schools do, they are using that NWEA and find that they can get constant feedback. And that way, the state test is once a year, just sort of a dipstick in, if you will.
I will also say, Scott, not that I want to, you know, this fall is the first time those kids have taken that test. So I suspect once they've taken it once, they take it again in mid-year, and they take it again at the end of the year. So just the familiarity with how to take it, I think, does help their scores somewhat. But it's nationally norm, so that would be nationally norm for everyone.
Right, right, exactly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. I have to say, I'm very pleased with my results. I inherited great scores. We start with our state testing in ELA. 66% of our students met or exceeded. When you put that in perspective with the state, that's an impressive score. I think the state only had like 48%. So we held steady in the at and above state expectations. Here, where we made the positive difference was reducing that substantially below expectation and pushing that into the partially means. That's positive growth, and that was the tipping point here for us. I really attribute that, and I can't say this enough, I think our whole team really is in awe and admiration of the great work teachers do, especially with interventions that are strategic to really tackling the strands. So I was very pleased with this outcome. In math, again, there's room for improvement, but we did very well, especially in comparison with the state. 55% of our students met or exceeded. Putting that in perspective with the state, 39% of the state only met or exceeded. So again, strong performances here. Clearly, there is a trend which we're addressing through curriculum and ongoing analysis of our data. That's with NWEAs, which we haven't reported on, but we're continuing to track that data. And again, I think that our teaching teams are really data savvy, but also not just teaching to the test, we're teaching to the whole student. And I appreciate that very much because this is a snapshot in time. There's a much larger story here, and so I always want to make sure that we keep that in mind. I think we're very fortunate at Weatherby to have very resource students. When you put that in comparison with Smith, it is not apples to apples. And so you may be tempted to say, hmm, this happened at Smith, and this is happening at Weatherby. I'd encourage you to consider that our SES rates are very, very different. Our practices are the same. We work hard to make sure that those are consistent so that we learn and grow together. In science, we did a nice job while there was a dip. I think the year before, we scored at 88%, meaning exceeding, it was 82% this year. Again, we hit it out of the park in considering what's going on with the state. This is a one cohort class, and so this is comparing, you know, again, two different groups of students on two different years. But again, we're watching that very closely. So again, we talked a lot about curriculum. This year, the Weatherby team is looking at tracking data on a weekly basis. Right now, it's very strengths-driven. Starting in a couple of weeks, we'll be assessing students on their presence. You may have noticed in the link 22, I put in an article about attendance. That's going to be a point that is really imperative to the success of all students. We can't make progress if they're not there. And so that's an area, when I look at data as a larger concern, we need to improve upon. So students' attendance, their social, emotional growth, and their academic perspective really triangulates the whole student. And so that is the angle that we're taking this year. We're working diligently to implement Envision while we had some pilot last year. This is the full shebang, and so we're excited to see how that goes and really analyze unit by unit how that's going. Our data teams are really looking at how to track the units, the strands, and compare that with NWEA data to get us ready for the spring. We also have a fast-track intervention program. This is a creative way to extend our day at a very affordable approach. And so our ed tech threes meet with students before school, and they get to bus in. We have the advantage of having that later start. And so they get a 30-minute intervention three days a week. That hasn't started yet, but I do believe strongly that that extra intervention gives them a much-needed boost. And again, we're always looking at our teaching practices. We want to make sure that all students have access to that rigorous, rich discussion. That means really looking at as many opportunities to make sure all students have that rich in-class instruction. So having specialists push in rather than pulling out of contact for interventions, we want to make sure that they don't miss those opportunities. So we're very excited about our start, certainly with our scores, and look forward to seeing continued progress. Do you have any questions for me?
Does the fast-track program start at third grade, is that when you're?
No, it's targeted at fourth and fifth. That's something I would like to see, because I think that boost would come earlier. We haven't started yet, but that's very much on the table. We have a meeting this Friday with those specialists as we're looking to work smart and really target those students. So any elementary parent knows NWA starts next week, FNP, DIBL, all of those things. That helps us identify our cohort. I think those numbers will inform us where we need to put our attention. It's a great question, thank you. Great, thank you.
Dr. Glenn Cross, you're up.
I want to begin by saying, our scores are nowhere near where we want them to be. There are some favorable trends here, and they do provide a strong incentive for us to implement some ideas for making positive change. That I'll rule out at the end. Our ELA, I like to put this into perspective, the state is approximately 50% or so meets or exceeds the standard. And we were, it was like 49.6, so it was approximately 50% of our students. And I think on a positive note, we see, you know, some moderate growth in the meets or in exceeds categories. So the blue is 2015-16, and the red being 2016-17. So, you know, a moderate improvement in those areas, we'd really like to see that. I'd like to see a lot more, and, you know, a slight downtick in the, does not meet, or partially meets the expectations, which is another positive trend. We do have a lot of students at the low end, and that's the group that we really have to focus our energies on in both reading and in the math score areas. So our math scores, and again, we see the trend district-wide. They, again, there's some moderate improvement here in the at or in the meets or exceeds expectations areas. But in overall, 28.5%, nowhere close where we want to be. I will talk about our top students, they do very well. I think they hold their own against any students in the state. But again, the below expectations students are really our greatest challenge in improving things overall in that. Our science scores are our best scores, and that, for a number of years, I've been quite proud of our science scores. And again, this year, you know, approaching 70%, but just slightly under. And, you know, so hats off to our science teachers. But again, room for improvement here, I'd like to see that go up even higher. A lot of our school improvement efforts focus on the area of math. And this year, there was a variety of factors. We had some retirees, we had some new hires, and it was really an opportunity to look at our overall school program and move some people around and with the goal of getting our strongest teachers in the best areas to really focus on our overall, strengthening our math instruction. So I think we're able to do that, and I'm really looking forward to seeing how this year plays out in addressing those changes. Full implementation of the Envision math curriculum, this is something I think that is maybe overdue because we're all speaking the same language now, K-8. And so I'm excited to see that, and I think, you know, a few years, in a few years, I think that's going to show positive results for our students. Students will be learning, speaking the same language in mathematics right up through. So I think that's going to take some, that's going to have a positive momentum, I believe. And the addition of a math coach, we are a Title I school, and so we're fortunate to have funding for a math coach position and a Title I support through a math tutor. So I think the math coach concept is going to help teachers speak the same language, focus on best practices in math, and, you know, provide another way to look at data. Our NWEA data is much more favorable than the MEA scores, because I can see growth. Even though students are below proficiency, the majority of our students are showing growth. But what we need to do is focus on those students who are showing low growth and low achievement and move them up. So the math coach position is going to be, you know, someone that I can work closely with and break that down and analyze and target instruction to the specific groups of students. And so while a math coach will help me do that, the Title I Support Math Tutor is a new position this year, and that person is going to help me actually provide instruction for those students that we had in our school. We are also able to, our special education population is around 20% to 25% at a given grade. And so we realigned our special education department this year to focus, to really focus our instruction on helping kids with special needs. So I think that was essential in our school. And finally, the NEAS recertification process that we've been going through, we've been focusing on improving teaching and learning, and that's a big focus of NEAS. So some of the things that we implemented that I mentioned above in the top bullets are a result of the NEAS thinking that, you know, on how we can improve teaching and learning. And also, a couple of other areas, we wanted to revisit our school mission, our purpose in the face of changing demographics over the last five, six years. I think that was something that's essential, so we're able to do that. And also on improving school culture and climate, which I think, once you have that solidly in place, I think the teaching and learning, that is positively impacted by that. So those three areas are really enhanced through our NEAS recertification and focus. And so my expectation is that, you know, we are going to hit the ground running and show some improvement here in these particular areas.
Questions for Richard?
Thank you.
Mr. Drew, you're up.
At Reed's Brook, our ELA scores are, 66% of the students are above or at state expectations. But if you were to look at the graph, I put the state expectations in red, and in the last two years of data to the left. And on the left half of the graph, we want to see a downward trend in the two blues, and we want to see an upward trend on the right side of the graph. And we do, but only with about a 1% deviation. So we have to kind of be careful when we're looking at that. So when we're looking at our LA scores over the last two years, a 1% growth, though it's still growth, is, in my opinion, we're kind of flatlining a little bit. So we want to keep an eye on where that is. Even though we are well above state expectations, we want to make sure that we're continuing that push as we go forward. When we look at the math slide, something very similar happens. You know, our very well below students that decreased, and we're able to increase our well above. But still, it's only about a 1% change. So even though we are above state expectations at 52%, we're not growing at a substantial rate. So we want to be able to look at what we're doing in our practices. Science is a different story. Now, science took a 9% dip from last year to this current testing year. And when we're looking at that, even though we are still well above the state average and what our scores are, that's a huge cut or a huge dip in how the students performed. So some of the things going into this, not knowing a little bit of, still learning about the district, all right, some of the things that we're looking at right now to be able to address these across all the content areas. We are going to be looking at our second year, our full implementation of the Envision curriculum. But we're also looking at the scope and sequence. One of the things that we looked at when I started digging into the scores, in particular with the math scores, is there was a relative weakness, no matter which subgroup you were looking at. If you were looking at your well above students, there was a weakness in geometry. If you were to look at your average students, the ones who have made the state average, there was a weakness in geometry. If you were to look at the well below, and below, there was a weakness in geometry. It was a common theme. So when we cross-reference that already, we're looking at where does that play in the Envision program? It was after state testing. So we're going to be looking at, maybe we need to take that one particular section and move it into a different part of the year. So those are part of the discussions that we're looking at currently. We're also looking at how do we use our current time in our schedule? We have a study hall and academic extension time. But how is it going to be utilized to both remediate as well as accelerate? Not just in mathematics, but in the reading program as well as in science. We want to be able to look at what are the students using, sorry, teachers using for formative assessments, and how is that guiding their instruction? How is it taking them from where the students are to where they go next? We also started our discussion with a few of the faculty to look at the NWEA scores. When I first started talking with the staff, they're talking about these students in the certain percentile range, or these students in this percentile range. I asked them to start looking at where they are on their RIT band. So when we start looking at where they are on the RIT band, then we can start looking at the student profile, about where they are ready to receive certain information, all right? What is it that they've mastered at about 75-80% accuracy, to where are they struggling? And start looking at, what do we look at our time in our schedule, start targeting those individual needs. Because some of the students may have certain holes that developed in their education, which is inherent. Whenever you have someone going through a school system, they learn at different rates. So what are we going to do to give those students that extra time? So that's one of the things we're looking at currently. We're going to be starting up data meetings, and that's going to be probably a weekly discussion. Where are your students at? How do you know? Where do you want them to go? And a check-in, you know, what are you using for evidence as we go forward? Any questions?
Questions for Dawn?
What's the special education percentage at Reed's Brook versus Wagner? Because they said 2025 at Wagner, and what did it at Reed's Brook?
I honestly don't know.
It's not as high, I don't have the percentages.
The district, we do a little calculation, it's about 18%, and so, you know.
and, and so, you know.
We were, we were pushing twenty percent.
Was that nineteen point five?
Okay.
Nineteen point five, pushing twenty.
And this isn't, this isn't really for Principal Rue, but this is, just looking at these empower me tests and, and the way they go, you're really talking about, you know, as compared to the NUIAs, you're talking about getting a sense of the population as opposed to a sense of the instruction, aren't you? Because NUIA, you get fall to spring.
Right.
You can, you can track a child along the year.
Right.
But this is a completely separate cohort of students, so you're not, maybe you're getting a sense of what they're learning before, that the pipeline that's getting them there, but you're, it doesn't really tell anything about the instruction at that level.
When you bring us to the high school, that's the same.
Right.
Here we go.
The, like from year to year, you're removing the previous year's eighth grader and you're adding in the previous year's fourth grader, you know, it's, it's a lot of the same students, but it's, well, it's like fifty percent of the same students from year to year, right? Like, because at, at the middle school, well, it would be fifty percent of the same students for us.
Plus movements and the downs.
So it's a little bit hard to compare, but, but I think the, the, the NWA data is, is more practical to use because you have, you can show growth. So for example, you might have a student who does not meet and, and they still don't meet at the end, you know, like on the, on, on the MEA data, because it's proficiency base, but, you know, maybe they made huge growth, but, you know, they're still not proficient. So I think that's, but that's what you want to look at, I'd rather see a student make huge growth and, and, you know, that's kind of what you want to see. Obviously, I would prefer that they were proficient as well, you know, meet the state standards, but, but I'd rather have them make the growth.
And that same thing, we go into the SAT data and again, we're looking at our data from the high school, all three tests that you're going to look at results on are from the fifteen, sixteen cohort, which is a junior class, and then the sixteen, seventeen cohort, which is a junior class again. And because they changed the test a couple of years ago with the smarter balance, we don't have the same test to compare over a number of years. You want at least three years of data to be able to look at something.
Same with all the tests.
Right, so, so really what we want to do is we want to keep looking at this data, just like anything, you're never going to be happy with where your data is, there's some things in here we can dig into and look at and there's some things that we absolutely need to do. You have the numbers right in front of you, but if you look at the cohort, I met with the instructional leaders today and we looked at that cohort of juniors in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, across the board in a number of different areas, we're a stronger academic group than our sixteen, seventeen juniors. So that's why you see the results there as, as they are between the two groups, but if you jump to the next slide, we're still above the state, so we're in blue and the state is in red. Looking at that two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, again, it's the same idea as you compared across, we're still doing better than, than the state is, are we absolutely happy with where we are? No, we have more work to do, but as we look at that, we've got some work to do in comparing a bunch of different, through, through a bunch of different lenses, whether that be NUIAs, whether that be our class performance, whether that be with our graduation rate, but we need to look to see where those students are and what courses they're taking. But we do like the trend and I'm, I'm very happy with the work that teachers have done and being above the state level, it's just, we continue to work. Same thing with SAT, if you look at the sixteen, seventeen data, again, we, we trended the wrong way, as you can see, between the below and at state. If you look at the red, you want more of that, you want more of a bell curve, but as you can see with the, the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen cohort, we, we trended to the left side of the graph at the below and, and well below, so that's, that's not what we want. Again, looking here, if you're comparing the state data, not too shabby, looking at the fifteen, sixteen group, a little bit stronger, of course, especially if you look at your at state and, and above as compared to your below and well below. But again, it's, it's that understanding, I think someone said it dips, it really is, you're taking a look at one group at one point in time, it could be a bad day, it could be a number of things, but, I'm jumping to the next, it's just always going to be in flux in that sense where you're looking at a cohort of stu-, students, you're not looking at a growth model. Science, again, looking at fifteen, sixteen and sixteen, seventeen, not huge variance, again, are well below, state almost stayed exactly the same, but again, our, our fifteen, sixteen had a few more that were at the above state. And again, the same idea, we're seeing the same trends with the same students, again, to, we don't do another assessment in science, which is a little bit difficult to look at. I know that something that I was looking at in the past was that the, the NUIA actually is just piloting now and a, a science test and we give our NUIA to, to our freshmen and do we do our sophomores as well, guys? Do we test our sophomores in NUIAs?
Yes, freshmen and sophomores, yeah.
So, so the beauty of that is that what we can do is we could potentially look at those three tests and have that state data as well, looking at their junior year, so then you have the NUIA data to compare over two years and then the third year of the state test as well as the ELA in math. Some of the things we're going to do that, that we should be doing anyway as a staff is continue to look at this data as a whole. So we've got to take a look at this and we started to break it down today in the instructional leaders and they're going to take it back to departments for work, but starting to look at our number, you know, top two to three takeaways from this data, like what can we do? What do we read from this? What do we know about the instruction that the practice has been doing? So the questions we've got to ask ourselves every year, what's our course alignment like? Are we preparing students? And again, you're talking about April of their junior year, are they through all the concepts? Right now, we accept students coming in where they're at and we take them as a pre-algebra, algebra one, geometry, sometimes we take students starting in algebra one, algebra two, excuse me, geometry, algebra two, sometimes they come in already passing algebra, so they start geometry, so you can see the variance of what we're getting with students across the board of what they could be coming in with and, and the proficiency of where they'd be at by the time they get to junior year, just in the amount of material they're going to see. So we've got to look at that, we've got to look vertically, I know we've had a couple of changes in our math program over the last few years, so we, we know that putting all those students together to high school, that's going to have some sort of impact. So hopefully we look at Envision two point O as creating a real solid base for us as we go. And we're going to use our faculty meetings, professional development time, department head meetings, we have all kinds of, excuse me, instructional leadership meetings to start to dig into that data a little bit more. One of the other things, before I jump into that, is we do want to look at the NUIA data, we do want to look at our, our grades per quarter, we do want to look at our course selections to see how well that's matching up, just to make sure that we're getting a real true picture, because it's looking through so many different lenses of things, whether it's a growth model or whether it's the one cohort per year. Couple of things we're doing right now to support students in these, the SATs and the MEA science, we've got Khan Academy that we hook up our students with. The nice thing about Khan Academy is after a student takes a PSAT, as long as they've logged into the right email address and they remember that email address, it will take them to the areas of, of their weakness, so it'll focus exactly what they need to work, work on. So that's feedback that they can get immediately and they can start practice in those. So that's one thing that we're going to be looking at. Looking at making all our 10th graders take it, again, with the SAT, the more times they can see that format, the better they're going to do, so if we have all of our 10th graders take it as a PSAT, 11th graders potentially as a PSAT, and then in the spring of their, of their junior year, they're taking that SAT, so now that's three opportunities. I know we also offer onsite SAT for students who still want to do that too, so that's another way that they can improve their score. We have individual supports before school, after school, oftentimes if I step into a teacher's room during their prep period, they have students in there that they're working with. So individual students can come in, get that focused support that they need at, at pretty much any time. Last thing that we're doing that we're going to explore a little bit more this year are the idea of our fundamentals courses. We're offering some fundamental courses in social studies and we're picking those by their NUIA scores in their reading levels and so we support those, specifically those struggling readers. It's a model we've got to look at and say, do we want to do a similar thing for our, for our math? We do offer a pre-algebra, pre-pre-algebra for students who come in at certain levels. So that's, those are the conversations we need to continue to have, those are the conversations our departments need to have, come back with recommendations and decide how we continue to bring those scores up and, and really push that student achievement. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, so a little brief, just on one slide, so special education in our next step, what we're doing is we're charting the students who scored well below and below average in these sets up. We are comparing those scores to standard testing, IUP goals, we're going to analyze the progress in IUP goals and meet with individual staff, teachers, professors and so forth to determine what are the individual needs of the students and what changes would, you know, necessarily need to be made. Any additional testing may be needed, for example, we do have access to like key math, for example, if we need to look more in depth as to what the specific deficits are in math, for example, we also have some reading assessments. So pretty much what we're doing is we're analyzing each student and how they scored and whether or not we can make a change in their program to, to make a difference. Questions? That was a lot.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much, that was great.
I always appreciate that data, so thank you all, I know the board members do too. We're going to move right on, being mindful of time, so the technology.
Yes, we have great news, I'm asking for your formal endorsement to accept the low bid of the computer equipment of ninety-five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars at Apple at point seven four percent. I didn't, I apologize, I didn't put my agenda notes, we had two other bids, Anuska and Bank, two point nine seven, and Gore with three point two two. So I'd recommend your endorsement of Apple Incorporated at point seven four.
Second.
Any discussion or questions regarding this? If done, all those in favor? Any?
Thank you. And the policy committee has been discussing a resolution that Mary Ann Royal, over to my left, actually brought to us a few weeks ago with her interest.
I'm sorry, can I?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. I remember this from last year.
Yes.
We had to read the, the specific motion, right, for the?
Not this one here, no, not this one.
That's okay, okay, because I know that there was a motion at the top of it and I want to make sure that we're.
Thank you for, but what we'll do though is we'll attach this to the men's office. Thank you for asking us that. Mary Ann Royal brought to us an interest with respect to the resolution I have here before with you tonight. John, the policy committee have discussed that, we've personalized, this is actually came to us from the Portland school system and I'd like to treat this, we'd like to treat this as a first and second reading, so that we would look for the adoption of the resolution that pertains to immigration officers and so on, which you've probably read in many media outlets in the last two or three months nationwide. So I thank Mary Ann for bringing this to our attention. John, did you want to add anything to it?
I, I didn't, I didn't know if Mary, if, if there's anything you needed to add or anything you want.
Unless the board has questions, I'd be answering questions about the larger issue or just my concern about making sure that children and families in our community know they're safe and that their civil rights will be protected.
Thank you, Mary Ann. So again, I would recommend.
Have we had an issue?
Yeah.
Have we had an issue? Have we had an ICE agent come to the school looking for a student or any federal agent ever come to the school?
Not to my knowledge, Tony, no, not to date. I do know in Southern Maine, after we did some research, I do know there have been isolated situations in Southern Maine schools, but we have not had any in our, to my knowledge, no. So I think that's a good question, I would answer that by saying this, yet again, maybe being proactive, that we really give this attention so that if a situation did occur, that I, as your superintendent, have a protocol at least to follow.
Let me make a motion that we accept as first and second reading?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
I, you know, when I first read it, I just sort of thought, who thinks it's a good idea for us to get so embroiled in such a political debate that's going on in our country right now? And, you know, we've been a district for about fifty years and we've, we have taken on the mission of educating the students that come here without a, a resolution like this. And I know in there somewhere it mentions some federal law that took effect in nineteen eighty-two.
Yes.
So we've been educating students for thirty-five years without this resolution, without any issues. You know, last year, we had a real discussion during the summer and the fall about those two referendum items.
Yes.
And it was decided that we did not want to get embroiled in political arguments and we avoided that. And anybody who thinks this is about education is truly wrong, this is about making a political statement in opposition to the immigration policies of the current administration in Washington. This has nothing to do with educating the students that come through our door, we're doing an excellent job of that without endorsing some resolution like this. And I just, I just don't think we should get into these political discussions, that should be left to groups that are formed for that purpose, PACs and whoever else want to get into these politically driven agendas, but I think we should concentrate on education and avoid making political statements.
I, I appreciate that, I just want to chime in, also, one, wondering if we need to extend the meeting or, or table this, but we do have a second, a first and second, so we will be voting on this. I, I read this differently, I read this as there's a, a proper protocol that our employees have to follow if such a situation were to occur, just like within the healthcare industry that I work in, we have a policy saying that if a federal agent comes in and requests specific information about a patient or employee, we have a proper protocol that we must follow. And so this is protecting our employees and our students, so I don't view this at all as a political statement. I think probably because it was happening nationally, it's being perceived as such, but what's happening nationally probably triggered the discussion that's long overdue in terms of, this could potentially happen, particularly when Augusta's looking at possibly having immigrants in the Bangor-Hamden area, just like they have in the Lewiston area in Auburn, so that's my two cents.
Well, I would also, when I first looked at it, I thought, who would think it was a good idea? And then I noticed it came from Portland. And, you know, anybody who follows the news with their mayor, their city council, their school board, they have to, are at the far extreme of one edge of the political discussion in this country. They're trying to emulate Portland, Washington and Seattle and San Francisco and that's where this is coming from, it is a political statement.
So I don't want to cut this off, but we do need to extend tonight's meeting if we want to continue this discussion and do the vote, so can I have a motion to extend tonight's meeting, please?
I'll make the motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.
So, so remember, just add to this, Karen, we're treating this as a first reading, so even if the motion passes, tonight's going to come back to the board next time for a.
Well, the omission was.
I heard that, yeah.
So unless we want to amend that portion.
I did.
So, any other, I, so now that we have extended the meeting, there's, there's time for further discussion around this topic and opening it up.
I just want to say I agree with you, I, I see more as a, as a guideline, procedural, if something should happen in one of our schools, so I did not see it as a.
But it hasn't in fifty years, it's like we're getting out ahead of the curve, hey, we're going to make a statement, that's, I'm with Alan, that's my two cents.
And it's a very clever play on words, it says a safe haven, instead of sanctuary, which is the real buzzword today, sanctuary, city.
But just because it hasn't happened in fifty years doesn't mean it won't happen.
If we need guidelines, is there a reason why we have it as a resolution instead of like a policy?
Should be.
That's a great question, I contacted Maine school management, they did not advance the notion that it should be even a recommended policy, that's what we gravitated to the resolution decision.
And I think because it's also, the climate is changing so much.
Well, if they're not recommending it be a policy, then, I mean, that's even more proof that we don't need this.
But that's a resolution, not a policy.
Right.
But, I mean, if they're not on board with it, have we talked to our attorneys about it? Because you are getting into a legal gray area saying, we're going to provide a sanctuary, you can't come onto this property, well, we receive federal and state funding, do we have the authority to do that? And I don't think we should be putting stuff out there without our attorneys going over this.
I did talk to the attorney briefly, his, his position was similar to MSMA, that is, he only had Portland as a reference point, that came through the discussion with Mary Ann and the policy committee, and this is kind of where we're landing with that. Scott, you have to.
I, I guess I'm confused a little bit in this last, where is RS twenty-two Belize? So if immigration comes to the front door, we're not going to allow them to in, is, is Stuart going to stop them? I mean, they're going to come in, right? And it says all legal means, it's almost like we're not going to allow them in, I mean, I can understand we don't want to look into this, but. If they have a warrant, absolutely, we're going to let them in. Right. But what, what we are saying is that the school, any one of our schools, if a federal agent were to come to that school with, without a warrant and just want to speak to. agent were to come to that school with, without a warrant and just want to speak to the kids, we have this resolution in place that would guide the building principal and how they're, how they're to act, that would guide Rick and how he's to act in handling that situation. It doesn't preclude, um, by rule, anything from happening. But we are saying, this is the sentiment that what we want is, while the kid's here, the kid's not going to get bothered unless the parent says yes, the ICE can, can talk to my child, or ICE comes in with a warrant and says, I have a warrant to speak to this kid, then, then it's going to happen.
So what happens now, my kid's in seventh grade at Reed's Brook, and a state trooper stops? Do, does, does some, does administrator let them go talk to my child without calling me?
It depends on the situation.
It depends, yeah.
Now, I don't want to, I don't want to create any sense of murkiness, but you know what strikes me as I listen to you? Remember seven or eight months ago, this board had a very extensive conversation on the policy, that the superintendent can act in, in the absence of a policy? Remember that? So I just put that out there because as we're talking tonight, I think what, what we're, in my opinion, we're trying to do is get a procedure. I appreciate Alan's comments and Tony's as well. So I guess, just keep in mind that the, I wish I could remember the title of the policy, but I hope you're following me. Do we want to gravitate to the fact that if something were to happen, based on your question, and we didn't adopt this resolution, then the closest policy that would give me guidance along with administrative team would be that policy that's referencing, in the absence of a policy, the superintendent makes the decision. So I just put that in the conversation as well. Mary Ann?
Could I make one point? This, this resolution and policies that you may develop out of it actually is going to protect you. There are three, and then there was a fourth case in, um, Virginia that went to the federal appeals court, um, and that the, um, offending institution as such was held liable for violating the civil rights of the individuals because they used an administrative detainer, because they let someone in, um, to question someone without a judicial warrant. So you're actually protecting yourself also by having this kind of process in place.
Any other, um, thoughts or discussion to add to this? We do have a motion, we do have a second, unless Scott wants to withdraw his motion, we're going to move forward with the vote.